Didn't call this meeting to order February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Good morning, all. We do have a quorum present with all five commissioners in attendance this morning. First order of business, commissioners is the approval of the agenda.
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Hope to approve the agendas presented.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Next up is county resident comments and concerns. This time, if there's any member of the public that would like to address a governing body on any issues, either online or here in person, now would be the appropriate time.
Can everybody jump up and speak at once?
Packed audience today. And with that, we will go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda, and I'll move us right along into tab A, commissioners. Under tab A today, we've got the consent agenda, and we've got five items up for approval, first being the approval of the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. The approval of county vouchers warrants the EALs and the commissioner report. The approval of bonds. Approval of they-bates and rebates, and a request to restaff a vacant detention officer position. Commissioners, are there any requests to remove any items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
I would ask that we remove item A five for further discussion rather than handling it under a consent agenda.
Very good. Any other requests, commissioners? Are there any questions on any of the consent agenda items? If not, I entertain a motion to approve items A one through four on the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Slowing down for my minute taker. Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Next would be the item we just removed from the consent agenda, which is the request to restaff a vacant detention officer position. Commissioner Slaughter.
Mr. Chairman, it has been my understanding that the items that we consider under the consent agenda are typically those positions that will be refilled at the same level, so that we are actually doing them apples to apples. There are many cases where the potential for a new employee, depending upon what their insurance needs will be, can be a change in what our budget is going to be if we adopt that position. In this case, we actually have a change in the grade of the potential employee from a grade fifteen to a grade eighteen. And we have a change from step two to step five. Not to say that this is not appropriate, and that it's something that we shouldn't consider and potentially vote in favor of, but I don't believe that when we have a change of this nature, something that we should be handling under the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion on that, commissioners? I assume the difference in that commissioner is probably just the lateral entry versus hiring someone with no experience. Sheriff is not here this morning, but he will be later, so if he wanted to, we could delay this vote until he's here to speak to him.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with do with proceeding forward and voting, and I will vote in favor of this. I just felt like it was important that everyone was aware that we were going to have this effect on our budget if we choose this.
Okay, so I think probably what you're looking for moving forward, if it's a standard replacement or you know, refilling of the position at the same grade or step, then that should be under the consent. If there's an increase in cost outside of any you know, health insurance, then maybe pull it off the consent agenda.
That would, that would be my belief, and I think that's the best thing for us to do.
Any other thoughts on that, commissioners?
Sounds good.
Okay. With that, I would then entertain a motion to approve the request to restaff a vacant detention officer position as presented.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along into Commissioner comments. We are already ahead of schedule. Tell Mary's turn, of course. But it looks like Commissioner Slaughter, you're up first.
I knew, I knew that he'd get something in there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, because it's my turn to buy lunch, I will take a little extra time. I also have Mr. Legursky's report, so so I'll take a little of Mary's time in doing this, probably.
Oh, thank you.
So with the three weeks between our meetings, it allowed me to get away for a little while. Mariella and I enjoyed a vacation to Cabo. The grass was green, the water was blue, temperatures were perfect. It was a great getaway, so it was very nice to get away from, from the rigors of what has been going on here and the weather here in our area. On the thirty-first one, I returned. I attended the Rock Springs Airport Master Plan Elected Officials Meeting, which was hosted at the Sweetwater County Events Complex. The meeting laid out the calendar of events for the airport's new twenty-year master plan. The plan is a requirement of the FAA and illustrated the upgrades that are anticipated to prepare the airport for future FAA compliance. There were several informational panels placed around the Bison Room to give illustration of the plan. It was very informational and was well attended by Sweetwater County's elected officials. After the elected officials meeting concluded, a public meeting was held to give the residents of Sweetwater County a chance to view the first phase of the new master plan. On the first, I spent the day in my office, visiting with staff and other elected officials. It was a good chance to catch up on email, public comments, and events that took place while I was on vacation. I was also to catch up, I was also able to catch up with Marcia Driggs, the new director of the Golden Hour Senior Center. Marcia seems to have hit the ground running and appears to be on top of all things at the center. As I missed the Golden Hour Senior Center January regular board meeting, Marcia supplied me a packet. One of the major things that came out of it was their board would like to include a new lighting project for the exterior of their building as a capital request. I will talk to Jean about this. On the second, the Rock Springs Chamber hosted our monthly federal partners meeting. Representatives of our federal partners gave updates on the status of affairs within their organizations. There's a lot going on with each of these partners, but I will leave it to Commissioner Toman to elaborate, as she told me she didn't want me stealing her thunder as I got to speak first. On the third, Mariella and I attended the Memorial Hospital Foundation Red Tie Gala. The gala is a great event that showcases new technology and changes while giving the foundation and staff a chance to interact with guests. The gala is an excellent fundraising event and is fun to get out and see members of our community dressed up and having such a good time. The meal was prepared by the hospital staff and was excellent. I think the Federation raised a lot of money and participants really enjoyed it. On the fifth, I spent the morning preparing for this meeting and once again reviewing messages and correspondence. Things continue to be very busy, even with the passing of the Rock Springs RMP comment period deadline. I then met with Public Works Director Legursky to discuss the month's activity in his department. We had a good discussion, and he enlightened me in several areas. As always, he and his staff continued to stay very busy. Mr. Chairman, as per our normal meetings, as we receive that report from Mr. Legursky, I will continue by reading his report. Public Works Department, February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Buildings. We are reviewing the schematic plans for the room addition to the Rock Springs Youth Home. IT helped us get more reliable Wi-Fi connection into the boiler room at the Green River Courthouse. This will allow the boilers to update their firmware on a more regular basis and hopefully reduce some of the problem we have that we've been having over the last six months with them. We encourage everyone to be careful when walking across parking lots and sidewalks. We do our best to combat Mother Nature, but slick spots, slick spots still occur and can sneak up on anyone if we aren't paying attention. The warm days and cold nights have caused some situations in the parking lots where black ice has developed, and it is almost too late before you see it. The maintenance crew handled seventy-four work order requests in January. Road and Bridge Department, crews have had to plow, to plow snow during the last couple of storms, mostly because of drifting. Nothing like last year, which is a catch twenty-two for spring and summer runoff. We're taking advantage of the nice weather and hauling free lime coating, lime coated aggregate from Wyoming DOT at the, from the Bitter Creek Interchange to our lagoon yard so that we can haul it the remainder of the way to County Road number twenty-five, the Hiawatha Road in the spring. The Road and Bridge Mechanic and I met with Wyoming Machinery last week to discuss some maintenance issues and billing. They did inform us that their shop mechanic rate has increased to just over one hundred fifty-five dollars an hour, and their mobile mechanic rate has increased to over one hundred seventy-five dollars an hour plus truck. We will have to consider this along with all increases in the upcoming budget season. We're working on the fiscal year twenty-four CMAQ project and waiting for a response from Wyoming DOT to okay the bidding of this project. The Engineering Department, in concert with the Grants Department, is looking into a couple of different federal grants for County Road One. We should receive the one hundred percent County Road One study later this week. Our department will complete a final review and then send it to the board for midnight in quotations, reading and questions. Overall, this document will provide us with some great information on construction phasing and different treatments that are possible on County Road One. I attended a meeting on the Bitter Creek Drop Structure last week. It was very informative. This structure is located on Sweetwater County land east of Rock Springs, so we must keep informed of anything that happens with this structure. Parks and Rec. Crews are working on various maintenance items around different parks and helping facility maintenance plow snow in the morning, so all the different facilities are ready to go when everyone shows up for the day. We had what Rocky Mountain Power is calling a load imbalance at the Crossroads Park Pavilion this weekend. This imbalance caused extensive damage to the power meter on the exterior of the building. We are borrowing the sheriff's office mobile light plant to use as a generator so that we can maintain heat in the building until a new power meter can be ordered and installed. I've attached some pictures of the damage. Pretty unbelievable what happened, but you can see the meter was hot enough to melt the paint on the cover along with arcing to the cover. I'm currently discussing things with the RMP Claims Department regarding this issue. If you haven't seen those pictures, commissioners, it's pretty devastating what happened there and extremely scary. We almost have the reservation system for the parks, and more importantly, the soccer fields and ball fields fine tuned with time slots and field numbers. This reservation system will be online for reservations later this month. We will call everyone who has had previous reservations on the soccer and ball fields with us a couple of days before the site goes live. Custodial, everything with this department is going well. We had interviews last week and extended a job offer to one individual. It will be nice to have this person on board toward the end of the month, so this department can completely, be completely staffed for the first time in almost ten months. With that, I complete my report. Mr. Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, those are some pretty wild photos. Could have been a lot worse. Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report?
I, I did get a call from Farson wanting to know if they plowed the roads on the weekend because they got over a foot of snow. And so I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
I can state that in my conversation yesterday with Jean, his staff was out trying to hit all of the hot areas where there was blowing and drifting snow, so I would think that they tried to hit that area, but I, I'm not sure.
I, I, that's what I thought, and, but I didn't say anything. I said I would just check, check with somebody. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report? Thanks for your work, Commissioner. I'm glad you got to enjoy some nice weather down in the south. With that, it looks like Commissioner Toman, you're up next.
Okay, it's been a busy three weeks, I guess. January seventeenth, I attended the board meeting. Devin's giving a report today, so I'm not going to report anything. And we have a special meeting tonight at five o'clock. I missed the master plan meeting, so I have to do a catch-up or go to a public meeting on that because I was in Casper. So Devin, I won't steal any of your thunder. Not that I could. On January eighteenth, I attend the Coalition Local Governments Meeting in Lyman with getting all of the updates on all of federal plans and projects that we're commenting on. Also, on the eighteenth, I attended a four-H Educator Candidate's Open House, which was very well received by the public, the four-H public at least. There are probably over thirty people there visiting with the two candidates. And then on the nineteenth, I was on the hiring panel, and we won't know from the university for several weeks which candidate they decide to hire. On January twentieth, I attended the funeral of ninety-seven-year-old Farson resident Betty Applequist. A wonderful lady who is always very active in the community over there. She'll be greatly missed. On January twenty-third, I attended the Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative Executive Meeting. I'm alternate on the executive board representing county commissioners. It's a nineteen-million-acre project area in southwest Wyoming. Right now, they have seven hundred thousand dollars worth of projects ready to go. But because of the budget with Congress, they cannot initiate any of those projects until the budget is approved in March or whenever it is finally approved. Sweetwater County, the one project that we have is Aspen Regeneration. We're partnering with Mule Fanatics and others to do treatments in the Little Mountain area, so that was one of the big projects, hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. We also had a fencing project for the solar Sweetwater Solar to allow the antelope bypass, but the proponents didn't want to do that or didn't respond, so I think the antelope have figured out how to go around the back way, and Commissioner Richards was on the P and Z assures me that there is a bypass way for them to get around the solar farm from the backside, which I hadn't realized. So thank you, Commissioner. January twenty-fourth, I attend the Pulse Meeting Legislative, and we received legislative updates and a report from the Wyoming Taxpayers Association on the different property tax initiatives and how they would affect the state. On the twenty-fourth, that afternoon, there was a Zoom meeting with Ashley National Forest. It was also a live meeting in Vernal, but they, they revealed their final plan for the Ashley National Forest. And after our special meeting with them in last fall, it did seem they adopted some of our recommendations, and the cooperators didn't have any real issues with the, the way the plan's coming out now. We proposed a ten-year plan, so we've asked them to develop a strategic plan, a ten-year plan for their forest products, so that should help make that forest more interactive and progressive with what they're doing. I, I met with Cindy Johnson regarding her strategic, their strategic plan for the Combined Communications Joint Powers Board. It addresses infrastructure, services, and methods of operations, so it, they've had several meetings and it's very good. I'm sure that they're going to be coming and giving a report, so I'm not going to go into all of that. January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, Friday night and Saturday, and February second and third, I attended the CERT training, the Community Emergency Response Team Training. I would encourage residents, elected officials to take the class. It gives a great overview of, of all of the emergency management things that a, that a volunteer group may be able to assist with. We might be, not be able to be frontline responders, but we can provide backup if needed. Special thanks to Emily Covey. I think they'll be reporting today our Emergency Management Services Coordinator, Sandy Seppi, our coordinator. Rhonda Zane Canela from the Community Health, and Chief Jim Wamsley, who taught the fire section of the class. So a great twenty-hour free training. It enhances the ability to recognize, prepare for, respond to, and recover from an emergency or disaster situation. Participants are trained to take care of themselves, their families, and their neighbors before, during, and after a major emergency. The course addresses basic how-to manage disaster occurrences in the home and the neighborhood, and then they had a a mock emergency situation with the thirty class members in the back of the Sheriff's Department. There was a building collapse and we had to take on different roles, so that was, that was very interesting. We did that Saturday afternoon. January thirtieth, Trona West had a scoping meeting on Zoom, which Eric attended. I was not able to do that. I was traveling to Casper for the BLM Resource Advisory Committee Council Meeting on January thirty-first. It was a very interesting meeting. We're supposed to give advice to the BLM. So far, we haven't given them a lot of advice, other than to say we wanted to see an administrative draft of the Rock Springs RMP for the cooperators, and at our federal partners meeting, Kimberly Foster, the field manager from Rock Springs, assured us that that would happen, that we would see that before it went public. So that, that is very important. Each of the area managers of the BLM provided updates on what's happening in their areas, and I do have the agenda and the, and the reports. If anyone wishes to see that, they were it gives you hope to know that there, there really are some great things happening with BLM in spite of all of our concerns with the BLM RMP in Rock Springs. They're, they're doing projects of all, all types. We also have two of the infrastructure projects in Wyoming, ten million each for ten years in the LeBarge area and Muddy Creek out of Rollins. So Wyoming did get two of those big projects. And then on February first, I did attend the Conservation District Meeting along with Commissioner Slaughter to get the update on the drop structure. It looks like we'll have to wait till summer to look and see what is, what the status of the drop structure is underneath. See if it is collapsing or if it has to be rebuilt or what's going to happen there. Oh, while in Casper, we also did a tour of the National Historic Trails Interpretive Center. That was very interesting. I'd recommend that if you're in Casper. It's an interactive type of museum, so it's great for kids also, because they can actually touch and see different things. The trails are lit up on boards where you can actually push a button and see which trail went where. A lot of interesting things with that. February second, attended the federal partners meeting. It's a sharing meeting. I understand BLM had some issues with it because they were thinking it was going to be qualified as a FACA meeting, a Federal Advisory Committee meeting, which it was not. It is not. It is a sharing with our federal partners, and we've invited legislators also to listen in or share if they choose to. The Refuge provided an update. Tom Kerner will be retiring March seventh, so that's going to be a huge loss. He's in charge of six or seven other refuges as well. The BLM provided the updates on some of the projects in our area, which we are also cooperators on. Forest Service is excited to move into the Golden Hour with three of their staff members, and they will be begin work, begin work on the Buckboard environmental assessment for the boundary change, and they are working on that waterline right now, I understand. So I just want to say again that thank the chamber for hosting our federal partners meetings on Friday. It is a public meeting at nine o'clock, first Friday of every month, and the federal partners can get on Zoom or they can attend in person to provide updates on what their agency is doing. It is in no way an advice-giving group. It is simply a sharing, and so everyone has an opportunity to learn what the other agencies are doing. And next week, we all head to Cheyenne for Wyoming County Commission Association Legislative Session. That concludes my report. Unless you want me to read all these other.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your report. Any questions for Commissioner Toman?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on the federal partners meeting. I understand there was some concern and some well, I'll just leave it a concern, I guess, but the idea is just to provide open communication and any updates that may be happening with the different federal partners, and I think there was some hesitation on one of their parts in regards to the some of the legislative body being there, and I guess my response to that was if they're, if they're not comfortable being there, then they don't have to show up. I don't think we're violating anything. It's openly advertised, so appreciate the chamber for their willingness to host them. And with that, if there's no other questions or comments, thanks, Commissioner, for your work, and I'll hand it over to Commissioner Richards.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Let me apologize in advance because it's going to be a long one this morning. After our last meeting on the sixteenth, I attended the Library Board Meeting here at Sweetwater County Library in Green River. On the twenty-second, along with Chairman West, I met with Mayor Mickelson and some of the staff concerning ambulance service in Rock Springs, and we discussed some options for pursuing better service in the future. We opened some lines of communications and shared some ideas. On the twenty-third, I remotely attended a meeting of the Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Coalition where we received an update from Kevin Clegg regarding the Flaming Gorge Recreation Area Management Plan and some of the projects they're working on this year. Following that, I attended the monthly Fair Board Meeting. They're already getting geared up for a busy year, including preparing for the Escapees Rally in June, the National High School Finals Rodeo in July, and of course, the Sweetwater County Fair and Big Show the first week of August. Next morning, I attended Pulse's meeting where we received updates from various groups regarding their legislative agendas for the upcoming budget session, followed by a presentation from the Wyoming Taxpayers Association hosted by the SEDC here at the courthouse, where they provided us some good information about where taxpayer funds are collected and spent in Wyoming. On the thirtieth, I joined Al Harris on his morning talk show to discuss the RMP process, something I think we are all pretty tired of talking about. On the thirty-first, I joined Land Use Director Bingham, Fire Warden Zimmerman, Deputy County Attorney De Leon, as well as representatives and elected officials from Rock Springs, Green River, Granger, and other local government entities in a meeting with the staff from the Industrial Siding Council regarding Project West. West Soas Application to Industrial Siding for Project West triggers a fast and furious process for the application of industrial siding funds. As the host county, we will take the lead role in the process, organizing the local entities that will be impacted by the project and seeking those funds. As the liaison to the Land Use Department, with your, with your support, Mr. Chairman, and the permission of the rest of you, I'd be happy to take point on that process, which will include under Eric's watchful eye, of course, chairing meetings with the affected entities to develop a cohesive application, and then to present that application to the Industrial Siding Council, so I hope I have all your support in taking the lead on that. And then since it's vitally important to have a commissioner present at every step of the process, I've also asked Commissioner Slaughter to be closely involved so that for some reason I can't attend any particular part of the process, he can be there to seamlessly step in. Is everybody okay with him and I doing that?
I have my full support.
Yes.
Appreciate your willingness to both of you.
Thank you all for your support, and on this, and thank you, Commissioner Slaughter, for agreeing to help. I may be reaching out to you all individually as it progresses, and I'll keep you informed every step of the way. Couple of notes from the project. They are tentatively planning a public hearing in April. Construction is planned to start in January of two thousand twenty-five, and full commercial operation should commence by January of two thousand twenty-seven. The constructed facilities will include the soda ash processing plant, purge ponds, facilities necessary for mining in the solution mining area, fluid transport pipelines, a water pipeline from the Green River to the processing plant, access roads, rail spur, natural gas supply pipeline, and interconnections to the electric power supply. Preliminary peak workforce estimates during construction will be one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven jobs with an average of, average workforce of eight hundred and two over the January two thousand twenty-five through December two thousand twenty-six construction period. It's estimated that the facility operations will require a permanent workforce of three hundred and nine jobs. Project West represents an investment into our community of approximately two point five billion dollars and over eighty-four million in local material purchases. During the construction, the project will generate over a hundred and four million in local sales and use taxes and approximately three hundred and twenty-seven million in property taxes over the life of the project. In addition, the mining of Trona will result in approximately fifteen million dollars annually in mineral severance production taxes. Great news for Sweetwater County and Southwest Wyoming. Some other good news is that Project West is working hard to mitigate the housing impacts that their construction workforce will have on the community, and has been working, working closely with the events complex and other resources to provide a short-term housing. to provide a short-term housing for their construction work. To provide the short-term housing their, their construction workforce will require, excuse me. Exciting times ahead. Moving on, later that evening, I attended the airport's master plan elected officials preview meeting. Thank you, Devin, for hosting that. Good information. Then on the first, I joined the Sweetwater County Conservation District for their discussion with the Little Snake River Conservation District about the drop structure East of Rock Springs. Later that night, I attended the legislative town hall meeting at the college where I think eight of the eleven members of our local legislative delegation responded to questions from their constituents. I have to say that for the most part, Sweetwater County is well represented in Cheyenne by a delegation that is fighting hard to make sure that our needs are met at the state level. Sadly, two of those members, one that attended and one that didn't, are not supportive of the industrial siding impact funds that local governments depend on to mitigate the impacts that large industrial projects have on our local communities. That's a whole other discussion. On the third, I also attended the Memorial Hospital Foundation's Red Tie Gala. It was very well attended and a great time. Thanks Irene, Tiffany, as well as all the board members and volunteers that work so hard to keep our hospital going strong. Last night, I attended an informational meeting hosted by the Wyoming Game and Fish at the White Mountain Library. They are in a fast-track process to implement some new regulations at the Flaming Gorge to help with the recovery of the Kocany salmon population there and to enhance the fishery overall. It'll mean some drastic changes though, so I invited them to try to get on our agenda, hopefully in one of our March meetings, so they could share their plans with us and we could help them keep the public informed. Going forward, tomorrow, I plan to attend the meeting Chairman West organized with Castle Rock Hospital District Board of Directors at their medical center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for organizing that. I look forward to, forward to getting to know the members of that board and opening the lines of communication with them. On the eighth, I'll attend the Sweetwater County Republican Party's county caucuses at the college campus in Rock Springs. On the twelfth, I plan to attend the next meeting, the Solid Waste District Number One Board. We'll be addressing a vacancy on that board later today. Then for the rest of the week, I'll be in Cheyenne attending the Wyoming County Commissioners Association Legislative Conference. That should be a whirlwind week during the first day of the, days of the legislature's budget session. On the following week, on the nineteenth, I'll join Johnny Kay on his morning radio show to discuss county issues. And later that evening, I'll attend the library board's meeting, bringing me full circle back here on the twentieth. I also have some news from the Sweetwater County Economic Development Coalition. The SEDC has partnered with Western Wyoming Community College to have a part-time marketing and social media specialist intern for the organization. They welcomed Lindsay Yazinko to the team on January twenty second. She will be helping drive traffic and create engagement with their social media platforms. The SEDC began a monthly radio show on KREO starting on January thirtieth where they hosted Chairman West to talk about the RMP and the outlook for the county in two thousand twenty four. And on their upcoming show on February twenty second, I'll be joined by new board member Casey Cuckard, who we appointed recently. Next SEDC board meeting will also be on February twenty second where they will elect new officers. Speaking of which, I want to extend my thanks to Devin Brubaker for the many years he dedicated to the SEDC board. His dedication to our community is appreciated, appreciated and does not go unnoticed. So thank you, sir. I think that's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. That was a lot of information, a lot of good information. Huge projects in regards to Project West, and that is exciting times for Sweetwater. And I also commend them for their willingness to, you know, work on the, the housing shortage and what that may look like. And they've been a great community partner, so we're excited to welcome them and look forward to getting that kicked off. Questions or comments for Commissioner Richards' report?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yeah, and this may be a question for Sally. As part of the minutes, in, in the report that Commissioner Richards just gave, will you have all of the statistics which he gave with respect to Project West? And if not, I would just request those numbers from Commissioner Richards. So I, I just found that very interesting. There's a lot of good information and I'm receiving a lot of questions about that project. So it would be nice to have that, that information available. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Slaughter, I'm going to email my notes directly to her right now.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thanks again, Commissioner. And it looks like Commissioner Jones, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January sixteenth, after our previous commission meeting, I attended a Zoom conference with the Bridgette Teton National Forest to start the discussions of their upcoming travel plan and how it will affect access. The Forest Service put together a panel of four people to guide the meeting and the conversations. What was not lost on me was the fact that there was not any motorized representative on the panel. And in fact, Jim McGagnon, who I have a ton of respect for, was the only representative from Wyoming. The other panelists were all non-motorized and from out of state. Several of us that I know of across the state sent in questions on the chat and the Zoom meeting about this particular topic. The questions disappeared from the Zoom chat. And when I sent in another question asking why, I was told nothing had been removed. So I again asked my questions and then those questions were labeled as archived with no explanation. So we've been assured that motorized will be included, but this feels eerily similar to what we just went through with the RMP. This travel plan will be very important to the citizens of Sweetwater County as a large number of our residents recreate in the Bridgette Teton Forest. Boundaries are basically in the shape of an upside down horseshoe. Pretty much starts northeast of Cokeville, goes up through Afton, Alpine, Jackson, the Horse Creek area where so many people from here snow machine in the winter, up over Togety, down Union Pass into the Upper Green area, north of Pinedale, and ends near Christina Lake. So it's a massive area widely used by people in this area and our access there is now under attack. On January eighteenth, I attended the Sweetwater County GOP meeting, gave a brief report on the BLM RMP. Hopefully, I'm starting to dwindle on those reports. January twenty third, I attended the Sweetwater County Outdoor Collaborative. Naturally, the BLM RMP was mentioned. Also briefly, briefly discussed was Southwest Wyoming Off-Road Trails presenting to us in our previous meeting and our desire to enroll all county roads in the program. As Commissioner Richards mentioned, the Forest Service gave an update and it covered buckboard boundaries and water systems, a generator, a fire hole going down. Also, there's been some talk of a state park inside the Forest Service and evidently regional office is not very warm on the idea of partnering with Wyoming, so that probably doesn't look very possible. Also, there'll be the statewide outdoor recreation collaborative in Casper on April eighteenth through twentieth. I'm planning on attending as much as possible, although it does coincide with my daughter's twenty-first birthday and the trip we have planned for her, so I'll do my best. One other thing to mention, Chris Floyd was recently named the Deputy Director of State Parks Historic Trail Sites in the Office of Outdoor Recreation. I don't know how they get that on a business card, but I've met Chris before, but I don't know him well as the, as, since I'm the current Chair of the Wyoming State Trails Council. I'll be working closely with Chris and the people I know and trust in that department speak highly of him, so I look forward to getting to know him. On January twenty fourth, I attended the Pulse meeting, as was mentioned a few minutes ago. Tax bills were discussed. They also discussed carbon capture bills, property tax relief. But was briefly discussed the unreasonable fifty percent reduction petition going around to try and get on the ballot. I know Assessor Davis has presented us, but a reminder to the public that about seventy percent of property tax goes to K through twelve education and about twenty percent goes to counties and cities. Also, Wyoming is the fourth lowest taxed state in the country. The other three lower than us have an income tax. We obviously don't. A state income tax, that is. In my mind, that makes us the best state in the nation. A little biased. On January twenty fifth, I attended the Joint Powers Telcom Board Meeting, mostly mundane topics such as paying bills and correspondence. On the twenty sixth, I attended the special meeting for the Starbus Board that they called. Discussed was the need to hire a part-time bookkeeper to assist the new executive director. On the thirty first, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Hospital had an outstanding month in December with record-setting revenue of approximately twenty-three point seven million dollars. Mentioned in that meeting, but I think it really shows how much citizens of Sweetwater County have come to trust Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County and how far the organization has come in the last several years. January is predicted to be even higher than December, so more to come on that. Along the lines with the December revenue, none of the three bond covenants are anywhere near being of concern. Overall, most of the financial goals they've set are being met or exceeded. Also, the state sent a letter to the hospital on January thirtieth, so very recently, stating they're ready to issue the hospital a critical access license. This incredibly good news was not expected in such a short amount of time. So now the state has to audit the building and then also the joint commission will need to come back and do another survey. If you remember me reporting a month or so ago, they came in and did a surprise survey, which happens from time to time. The hospital has not worked their way through that one yet, so they're not requesting another joint commission survey. But certainly working quickly to get that taken care of and get that licensing in place. So hats off to everything they're doing up there to, to move things forward. Also, on January thirty first, attended the airport master plan review. Very informative. I'm sure it'll be covered more today with Devin. So I'll stop there and thank Devin for the presentation, the opportunity to understand the whats and whys of the airport expansion. On February first, I attended the enterprise meeting. Exxon gave a presentation on their operations, both in the field and the plant. Presentation also covered their future and what they do with carbon capture and have been doing for a while. On February first, I also attended the legislative town hall that was mentioned earlier. It was great to hear from our legislators as a group. Doesn't seem like we get that opportunity very often. They're all going a hundred miles an hour in different directions, so good to get them all together. On February second, I attended via Zoom the federal partners meeting that Commissioner Toman spoke about. I'll just say it was great to finally be on one of those and I appreciate the opportunity and I won't spend any more time on it. February third, I sat in for Chairman West as, as a judge at the Western Wyoming Community College Homecoming Chili Cookoff. You missed a great event. Was well attended. There are just tons of people there, so it was awesome to see. I was one of three judges to sample green chili, which is my favorite, so that was perfect. Everything tasted delicious. Can't thank the college and the chili cooking teams enough for making such a great event. On February, back to February second, I attended the hospital red tie gala as a guest of Craig Rudin Project West Gala. It was a milestone. It was the tenth anniversary. Think I've attended eight of the ten, so, and they've all been a great time. Sold out event and I think everybody had fun. All I saw was laughters and smiles everywhere. Seemed like a success. The foundation set a goal of raising two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the lab expansion and remodel. And in contact with Tiffany yesterday, she doesn't have the exact numbers, but it looks like they hit two hundred and twenty-five. So roughly fifteen thousand dollars over the goal. So huge thanks to Sweetwater County for showing up in force and supporting the foundation, Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County with your money. And of course, a huge thanks to the hospital and the foundation for putting the event on. I think I'm done.
Very good report, Commissioner. Appreciate you filling the role on the chili judging as well. Any questions for Commissioner Jones' report, commissioners? All right. It looks like I'm last, so I get to be the repetitive one this meeting, but I'll try and keep it brief. On the twenty second, Commissioner Richards and I met with Mayor Mickelson and members of his team, as Commissioner Richards already spoke to, relative to ambulance service and kind of some different ideas there that the city had. Good meeting. Always fun to continue working with our, our local partners there. The rest of that week, I spent some time soaking up the sun in Arizona for my other job, so I missed the monthly Southwest Counseling Board meeting. Unfortunately, but they started uploading their meetings to YouTube, so I was able to go back and watch it. It just seems like there continues to be kind of a lack of education with that organization and the board. And I, there's a lot there. It's a very complex board. They handle, you know, a variety of very difficult circumstances, you know, just in the nature of what they do. And I think, you know, we continue to try and build relationships there. And the board has been active in trying to work, you know, in particular in some of the terms of the agreement, which obviously follows suit with the state statutes that are required on a community service board. And I think there just continues to be a little bit of confusion there, maybe lack of education. So I have reached out and tried to help with some of that and will continue to chip away. But I think the more on board everyone can get with understanding the different roles, the more effective we can be moving forward. So it's going to take some relationship building and some trust and just trying to, you know, I guess shift some of that focus with different requirements that are being handed down from the state with different priority populations and then different funding sources. So it's a work in progress, but we are getting there and I trust we'll continue to march forward. So on the morning of the thirtieth, Kayla McDonald with SEDC and I had an hour-long radio interview with Johnny Kay and KREO in Rock Springs. And I have to give Kayla a hard time. She told me to prepare for a state of the county update and we talked about the BLM the whole time. So I prepared for that the, the day prior and then I did get to share a little bit of, you know, some of the work we've been doing. But primarily speaking, it was all BLM, which is good. It's extremely important. I would agree with Commissioner Richards that I think we're all probably tired of talking about it, but nevertheless, it's one that has significant impact on the future of Sweetwater. So more information we can share, the better. And hopefully on the next one, we can talk about something a little more positive. But I appreciated the invitation and for Johnny Kay being such a wonderful host. On the thirty first, in the morning, I attended the monthly district board of health meeting. They discussed their upcoming budget requests and trying to figure out how that may look for both cities and us this year. As you recall, statute requires both cities to participate in the funding, which they haven't done. So we got that kind of addressed last year, but the vagueness in the statute doesn't say how much they shall participate. And so their board continues to kind of struggle with finding a way to make that I guess equitable across the different governing bodies. And so they'll continue to have some discussions there. But nevertheless, that's good progress. They also discussed House Bill seventy-four, which will increase the annual funding amounts to the district boards of health as far as the state subsidies. So they're keeping their eye on that and hopeful that some of that will get pushed back to our local district. We also discussed some of the success in having Treasurer Cowan fill his role. Again, by statute, the county treasurer shall serve as the district board of health's treasurer for their board. And so he's been instrumental in helping them invest some of their funds in just over the last six months, has been able to earn just north of twenty-six thousand in interest earnings, which is again, some additional funding that the board has never been accustomed to in years past. So appreciate Mark's work on that. I know they do too. Later that evening, I also attended the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport Board or Airport's Master Plan Preview Meeting held by Devin and the team there that are working on future plans. Learned a lot. Aeronautics has always been kind of a fascinating one to me, so I enjoy learning more about that. And as you all mentioned, he'll be given a update later today, so I'll pause there for time. On the first, Southwest Counseling Board hosted a special meeting to approve some action items that they had tabled at their meeting the week prior in order to obtain some additional information to make a more prepared vote. I just wanted to take some time because since the public officer training requirement came about, there's been numerous boards that I liaise to that have shared what a beneficial influence that has had on them. And I've, I've already seen it just in a, you know, the last month or two, where it's kind of allowed some of these board members to stop and think about, you know, their role on these boards and the importance behind it. And I think a lot of people, you know, are willing to serve and do good things for the community, but they may not understand, you know, that they're in charge of a twenty million dollar budget or, you know, that they're kind of, not kind of, they are the boss of, you know, the different organizations they represent. So I've had a lot of good feedback on that. Some are asking for additional training, you know, whether that's relative to financials and budgets. Some have, you know, put it on their agenda to discuss as different boards, you know, relative to executive sessions or different, you know, policies. It's allowed some, you know, like the special meeting I just spoke to, to kind of take a step back and request additional information. So they're making a more prepared vote. And I just think overall, it's been a, a good thing. I know for some, some of us, we felt like we'd kind of been there, done that, but I think anytime you can have a reminder of, you know, some items that you may forget or the importance behind them, it's beneficial. And so, you know, I applaud those boards for taking it seriously and trying to implement change into the different organizations they serve on because it's incredibly important. You know, they're dealing with millions of dollars and making some, you know, decisions that have a very lasting effect on the community. So I appreciate that and I'm glad. So I appreciate that and I'm glad that they're on top of it. Mary's throwing papers at me, so I'm not sure what that means, but, um, that's good to see. And, uh, you know, one of the, the items recently was an application for funding from the state, you know, to the tune of about nine point three million dollars. And the board didn't have the information to, to vote on that. And I just think, you know, they kind of called that out, that they need that in order to support it and sign it. So that's a small indication on a rather large impact that could have on, you know, needing to be informed and knowing, you know, what to ask for. So it's a great thing and I'm glad that, uh, legislature has passed that through. Um, on Saturday the third, I also attended Memorial Hospital's Red Tie Gala and had a great time witnessing the tremendous amount of philanthropy this community continues to display. After ten years, the gala continues to have success and that deserves recognition to Tiffany Marshall, Irene and both the Foundation Board and Hospital Board of Trustees. It was a good time and, uh, good job by all. Tomorrow night, we do have a special meeting with Castle Rock Hospital District's Board to discuss ambulance services. And I look forward to formally establishing a relationship with their board. Uh, we did advertise this, even though Castle Rock will be hosting the meeting. It was in our paper of record over the weekend. Uh, but it will be tomorrow night in their clinic conference room at five P M. And so hopefully we can make some strides there on some of the different issues we may be facing with ambulance service. Next week, I'll be heading to Cheyenne for the legislative session and look forward to the W C C A meetings as well as the different meetings with our local delegation. And with that, I believe that completes my report. Other than I think whatever this is that Mary threw at me is there is options for a self-paced course that the Department of Audit has put together for this public officer training. I know there's a few that still have not taken it. So I believe you can get online and, and take the course now, kind of a self-paced with an exam at the end, if I cover that properly in that quick review. Very good. Thanks for that reminder, Commissioner. With that, Commissioners, I'd stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Slaughter.
I, I realize we're a little bit over on our time here, but I, I think it's important, um, to just make a comment with respect to this part of our agenda. When we first, um, talked about bringing back Commissioner comments, there was question as to whether it was necessary or something that was, um, of benefit to the citizens of Sweetwater County. I think you can see from today, um, the scope and breadth of the work that's done by this group. And I think that that's important for our public to see. It's important for me to see. I learned a lot of things from each of your talks and in your discussions today. Uh, I'd like to specifically state, um, in listening to Commissioner Jones, you know, he has stepped in and is doing a, an unbelievable number of things, uh, as, as a commissioner who has really been there for just a few months. But his network, um, the work ethic that he's got, I think, shows that we made an excellent choice when we, um, appointed him as the fifth commissioner to, to serve with us. And I'm honored to serve with this commission and seeing how this commission works and represents the county in all of these areas that we talked about this morning.
Here, here, Commissioner, very well said. It's a great group to work with. We do have a lot of fun and we are busy. You can't take that away. We may not always get it right, but we're busy. So I appreciate everyone's dedication, especially for the rookie. Well said.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Appreciate the kind words. It's a great group. I've enjoyed it. It's a lot of work, but when you have good people around you, you do good things, so.
Any other comments?
Well, I attended a Chinese New Year's, uh, dinner yesterday in Evanston and a counselor from, uh, I'm not sure where she worked, private counselor. But she did a shout out for Southwest Counseling at Evanston, so I thought I'd give you some good feedback. She said they're the best, uh, for referrals, so.
Very good. I will pass that along. I know they're watching anyway, so they'll enjoy hearing them. Any other comments? All right, job well done, Commissioners. Uh, we did fall a little bit behind, but not too bad. Next up on the agenda is our action presentation items. First up with us this morning is Janessa Meredith, CEO of the Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism, here to give us a twenty twenty-three annual report presentation. Good morning, Janessa.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have a bag in front of you. That's what the report will be in there. This looks just like this. My name is Janessa Meredith. I'm the CEO of Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism. Thank you for allowing me some time today to share with you our twenty twenty-three annual report. It's coming. We'll just wait for the screens for one second. This is how the local lodging tax has been spent in the last year. Um, you can see there on page two how the Lodging Tax Board is made up. Most of you know it's a Joint Powers Board. It's made up of six representatives from the city of Rock Springs, two from Green River, one from Wamsetter, and one is appointed by the county commission. And the entire mission of the Lodging Tax Board is to enhance the economy of Sweetwater County by attracting and retaining visitors. So we're a marketing organization that's intended to attract visitation to the area. Um, you can see there that the lodging tax has been collected in Sweetwater County since nineteen ninety-one. Every four years since nineteen ninety-one, the lodging tax is on the general election ballot and local voters have to vote to continue to impose that tax. And this last election that we had in twenty twenty-two, um, it was passed at an eighty-one support rate. So local residents really understand the value of the lodging tax. Also wanted to mention there that we're also, um, required to be audited annually and we have had clean audits every year without any findings. Um, I've been in the position for seventeen years and to my knowledge, we've never had anything other than an unclean audit, just for your information. Um, location at the bottom of that first page, it mentions the location on Elk Street that we moved into in twenty twenty. Um, we'd wanted to be on Elk Street for a lot of years before that. Uh, we thought about putting a mobile trailer, um, and having some information for those travelers that are traveling to and from the national parks. So when that building became available, it was really a great opportunity for us to be able to engage with those folks in that prime location. Our visitor center in twenty twenty-three had tripled the visitation that it had in twenty-one and twenty-two. It felt a lot like what it would have felt in twenty nineteen. So visitation at that location has been doing phenomenally. Um, wanted to mention the Board of Directors. Devon Brubaker also serves on our Board of Directors. He's our treasurer and he does a great job for us. Mark Lyon is our board chair and Cory Gardner is our vice chair. Um, we just really have a phenomenal board and staff, um, to work with as well. You can see there on page three how the lodging tax has come in. Um, we're collecting it a little bit over one point two million dollars right now. Um, the, the lodging tax is a four percent collection. Two percent, um, is voted on by locals and two percent is part of the statewide lodging tax. And the budget has broke down there, um, on page three as well, seventy-seven percent to out accounting, out of county marketing, seven percent to event grants, three percent to the chamber block grants, four percent to the events complex block grant and nine percent to administration. So both the Rock Springs and Green River Chambers of Commerce, and we provide block grant funding for them to provide visitor services and have for, for many, many years. And then the events complex, like I mentioned, um, we provide out accounting, marketing dollars to them and then help them recruit those R V rallies and in, in a lot of the events that they host there at the events complex. Um, on page four, as you know, we host many events in the county between twenty and thirty usually a year, sometimes up to forty, depending on what's going on. But any nonprofit event that's hosted in Sweetwater County that generates hotel or campground occupancy qualifies for lodging tax dollars. Uh, we increased that amount to eight thousand dollars. So typically it's anywhere between, anywhere between five hundred and eight thousand dollars, depending on how many room nights are going to be occupied by that event. We also work to recruit events ourselves to the area. We help the events complex with everything that they do and they do a phenomenal job. But we also work to recruit other events. Um, as you know, we hosted twenty twenty-three state three A and four A boys and girls state soccer. Um, and then we'll host that again in twenty twenty-four. That was a really, um, a collaborative effort. We couldn't have hosted it with one city. It had to be a collaboration between Rock Springs and Green River. So it's a testament to how the two cities work together to make things happen and to bring big events to our area. So eight hundred competitors with their family, friends, coaches, support staff. It's a six million dollar economic impact for those two years of hosting state soccer that we recruited. You don't have this in your, um, printed annual report, but this is what we call a heat map. Uh, we do occupancy studies every three years to determine who is occupying the hotels. Is it workers? Is it leisure? Is it sports? Is it meetings? Who is it? So we have a really good snapshot of, of that market. Um, a side note, when I started in this position, leisure, um, occupancy in our hotels was at seven percent and it's now between twenty-seven and thirty-two percent. So we've come a long ways. Um, but this heat map indicates what weeks and months of the year are high in occupancy and which ones are low. So if somebody is looking to plan an event that they want to host in our area, you can look at that map and see when it might be a good time to host that event based on the occupancy that exists. On page five, the list of committees and boards that I serve on. Um, I'm the vice chair of the Wyoming Hospitality and Tourism Coalition. That's a fifteen-person board representing tourism for the state of Wyoming. I serve on the Steering Committee for the Outdoor Recreation Collaborative. Uh, I chair the Lodging Association, uh, the Event Recruitment Committee. I chair the City of Rock Springs Beautification Committee, Flaming Gorge, Green River Basin, Scenic Byway Committee. And now I serve on the DMA West Destination Marketing Association of the West. It's a regional marketing board. I serve on that. And then I also serve on Destinations International, their small destination task force and their professional development committee. So have expanded into regional and national boards as well.
Have you heard from the Office of Tourism yet?
I have not. That happens during the legislative session.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I'll keep you posted though.
Didn't mean to interrupt, I was just curious.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Um, bottom of page five there, um, most of you know that we conducted a tourism master plan in twenty twenty-one. We knew that that federal funding was going to become available soon. So we, um, compiled thirty-one guiding documents in the county, everything from economic development, the chambers, game and fish, forest service, every guiding document that we could find. Um, we hired a consultant to comb through those documents, uh, put together a steering committee of twenty-four local leaders, conducted almost three hundred resident and three hundred visitor surveys, um, to determine what should be the plan going forward for tourism in our county. Um, and that, that resulted in a plan that we've been using. Um, I've sent it to most of you. If you don't have it, let me know and I can send it out to you again. Um, it's a five-year plan. Some of the projects that we've been working on under that plan, um, partnerships and collaborations, that's number one. That was number one in the plan. Without that, we can't really move any projects forward. So working together with our partners is critical. Outdoor recreation was the second, um, top priority of that plan. And under that, um, came promoting the, the attractions that exist. And in that is signage, letting people know what we have in our area and guiding them to it. And the Wyoming Office of Tourism just started administering destination development funding this last two years ago. Um, as part of that statewide lodging tax collection, we now are receiving funding to develop the destination, which we've never had in the past. Our local lodging tax is spent on marketing and promotions. We've never spent it on anything physical and by state statute, we're not allowed to spend it on anything physical. So the destination development funding through the Wyoming Office of Tourism allows us to, um, update the wayfinding sign program in the city of Rock Springs. That was a program that I was a part of starting in two thousand nine. Um, tourism paid for the design of it. The city paid for fabrication, installation and maintenance, which was not, not easy. Um, so this new plan, um, it's going to be phased, but this first phase will be thirty signs. Um, they're gonna look like that. Um, the mayor is working on a new city logo with a similar color palette. So a little bit cleaner, more up-to-date looking. Um, the first phase will include thirty signs that will go up in the city of Rock Springs. They have to be in the ground by June, so you'll see those going up here shortly. But that's something that we'll be receiving on a bionic basis. So once we kind of see how that comes in, we'll, I think we'll find out this next summer, um, what, what the next phase of funding looks like. We'll be able to develop a plan going forward for how we administer those funds locally. This is, like I said, a phase one of the update of the, the wayfinding plan in Rock Springs. There will be phase two and possibly phase three. They'll be obviously smaller, but the city of Green River is also interested in that funding as well for green belt pathway signage. On page six, uh, the Flaming Gorge Tours, many of you are familiar or have taken the tour. Uh, we launched those in twenty twenty-one. It's a full-day guided tour on a motor coach around Flaming Gorge. Uh, we've hosted over a thousand passengers to date. Most all, I think we have one four-star review and she had a great time. She just gave us a four, so, um, most five-star reviews. So that's been great. Um, that will be going on again this summer. We already have twenty-six dates on the books. It's really nice to be able to partner with the events complex and host those R V rally attendees on that tour as well. They really, really enjoy it. Last year, we ran two buses a day for six days to accommodate the international airstream folks and they really had a great time. So gonna keep going with that. Um, sandboarding is also something that we brought online a few years ago. I've been reluctant to promote it too heavily without proper signage, um, being placed out there near the sand dunes. I've been working with the B L M to get signage put up to make sure people are aware that there's going to be people, um, on boards. If you're on a motorized vehicle, it's really critical to be able to watch out for those folks. So I've been working on, on the signage with the B L M and that should be up in time for the season for us to be able to promote that a little bit more. Um, as you know, the Flaming Gorge, Green River Basin All-American Road was designated an All-American Road in twenty twenty-one, one of only thirty-seven in the country. So that qualifies us for federal funding to be able to build out turnouts around the Flaming Gorge, Scenic Byway on the Wyoming side. Uh, we did apply for some federal highway administration funds for a planning, um, for a plan of the turnouts on the Wyoming side. We really need to, um, decide the sites and build them out and decide what needs to be at each location. The two locations that we've looked at primarily are, um, the Clay Basin side and the Blacks Fork. Those are the two locations that we think would be prime for, for restroom facilities and signage. And, um, so I've applied for some funding for some turnouts. Uh, we were not approved, um, this last cycle, but we have an application that's ready to go when they do open that cycle again. So we are ready to continue to apply for those funds and hopefully we'll be lucky enough to get that planning document in place and move forward with those turnouts at some point. Board projects, this is, um, just something that falls outside of the scope of most of the primary, um, functions of the Lodging Tax Board. Um, downtown Rock Springs has, has done a lot in the last decade and we partnered with them on a number of projects this year. Uh, that, that lighted Christmas display was funded by Travel and Tourism. Um, the downtown historic walking brochure, um, that was funded by Travel and Tourism as well as this Smore Saturday event. I also worked, um, with the Mountain Biking Association Group to apply for some funding from the Wyoming Office of Outdoor Recreation to do signage around the Mustang Loop. Uh, that's the new mountain biking trail behind the college. So secured that funding and then worked with the designer to get those fabricated and installed. Um, that's a great system of trails if you haven't utilized it yet. And then we always partner with K U T V two news out of Salt Lake City. Um, this last summer, we featured all of the different rental opportunities that we have in the county right now. Historically, when someone came to our area, they had to bring their own gear, their own A T Vs, their own kayaks, their own inner tubes, their own, um, mountain bikes. And, and we have a number of vendors right now that are offering those rental opportunities. So we featured that on K U T V two news, um, this past summer. At the end of my presentation, I'll show you a couple of videos and that's one of them. And the big portion of that, that budget pie that you saw in the beginning is our out-of-county marketing. So obviously, um, the entire purpose is to generate visitation from outside of Sweetwater County. So that's a list of a lot of the media that we place, a lot of our efforts and a lot of the advertisements that you've seen. Some of them you see in town with the billboards and travel guides and, and a lot of it's placed outside of Sweetwater County. Um, public relations, um, I don't usually talk much about it, but we've had a lot of, um, travel writers in our area lately. So a lot of times when you see a publication feature, Rock Springs or Green River or Sweetwater County in general, um, saying that we're the top, top, top in the area and this and that. Um, our downtown, um, Christmas, I think festivities were mentioned recently. But I don't always tell all, all of the work that goes behind the scenes and getting those travel writers to our area, um, to get them to write about Sweetwater County. So we host press trips every year. We invite travel writers to our area between five and seven of them. And we host them and we give them a familiarization tour of Sweetwater County. And then we also attend media missions with the State Office of Tourism and we meet with travel writers from around the country and pitching Sweetwater County, letting them know what is here to see and talk about and tell their viewers about. Um, so when we host those writers, they generate editorial content for us. Um, and those are the publications that were associated with that travel, uh, writer press trip. But all of the editorial coverage that we have received, um, the media earned value was fourteen point five million dollars in the last year. So that's had you go and, and pay to place an ad in one of those publications, that's what it would have cost. And it was public relations editorial content that was generated based on hosting those press trips. And then we spend a lot of money, making sure people are aware of Sweetwater County and they come to our area and they spend money and they spend time and they see our attractions. We want to make sure that when they're here, they have a really great experience. So we really make sure to recognize the frontline employer. So we really make sure to recognize the frontline employees in hospitality that are really providing that experience for our guests. I created the REACH Awards in two thousand eight. Stands for Rare and Exceptional Achievement for Customer Service and Hospitality. And it recognizes those folks that are providing that quality customer service. We recognize them on a quarterly basis. They get a letter from Barasso. They really, really get excited. We try and get them as much coverage as we can because those are, they're the backbone of the industry. You check into a hotel and you have a bad experience or you have a dirty room, your maintenance issues aren't taken care of. You tell people about it and you don't want to come back. And so these folks are really, really what makes the industry go around and we want to make sure they're recognized properly on a regular basis. And then we also provide a customer service training program. It's called a Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. It's thirty nine dollars. It's a four-hour training. It's a credential. There are seventy seven locations around the country that do the same program. So it's very well-vetted and people who have taken it are really, really impressed with it. A couple hours learning about the area, learning about what makes Sweetwater County special. And then a couple of hours learning how to provide quality customer service, how to really knock it out of the park. So we have between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty with renewals right now, certified tourism ambassadors in Sweetwater County and we're really, really proud of that program. And then we make sure that, once we've spent all that money on that advertising, that we measure it and make sure that it's actually providing a return on investment to the local economy. So this research that you see is just measuring the advertising that we placed. The State Office of Tourism does additional research to measure so many different metrics that we can't afford to measure. But this is just measuring the advertising that we placed. And we know that for the advertising that we placed, it influenced almost sixty seven million dollars in visitor spending. They bring about three people with them. They spend about three point three days, engage about in about four point one activities. And the average trip spending per party is thirteen hundred and nine dollars. So we know that for every one dollar that we spent to market to them, there was a four hundred and ninety dollar return to the local economy. So we influenced over fifty one thousand visits to Sweetwater County. We commissioned that through Strategic Market and Research Incorporated. It's a nationally recognized research firm. And we have those numbers going all the way back to two thousand and eight. So really, really big business. Tourism is big business in Sweetwater County and I'm really honored to be a part of it. I want to show you a few videos if I have a minute.
Flaming Gorge country is a landscape like no other. Here ancient.
This is a new thirty-second video that we have for the All-American Road. We just created this one in the last year, so it's new.
Flaming Gorge country is a landscape like no other. Here, ancient rock formations and pristine wilderness meet stunning waterways and canyons. Tour the Flaming Gorge Scenic Byway, a designated All-American Road in southwest Wyoming, and let the open road take you somewhere unforgettable. Travel safe and stay informed while adventuring responsibly in Rock Springs and Green River. Plan your adventure at explorewy.com. Flaming.
And I'll show you one of that KUTV Two News.
Road tripping sponsored by General RV and Explore Rock Springs and Green River, Wyoming.
Welcome back. We are road tripping once again. We're spending the day in Rock Springs, Green River, Wyoming. This area is absolutely incredible and I'm joined by Janessa Meredith. So great to see you.
You too.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, I want to talk about behind us. We actually have the Green River. This area is so great for people who want to get outdoors and do all the things. So let's talk about these rental opportunities you guys have.
Absolutely. Southwest Wyoming is so vast. It's high desert landscape, so it's not what you always expect of Wyoming. And it can be intimidating if you don't have the gear, if you don't know the way. For years and years, it's been a little intimidating and right now we're in a great position. We have packaged bus tours. We have rentals of all kinds.
I love that. I think you make such a good point because that's something that, you know, people might not think about, but it is a little daunting if you feel like you don't have the setup. But the rentals, that takes that piece out and it's as easy as a road trip to this area. Check out everything. The Green River behind us is beautiful, but let's talk about all the different type of things that people can do.
Everything from mountain biking to kayaking to riding an ATV in the Kilpecker Sand Dunes. And if that's too much, you can surf the dunes on a sandboard.
So fun.
There's a, the list is endless, really. True high desert adventure. There's so many opportunities.
I love it. And you know, it's so great for families who are really looking to just take a day trip or a couple of days. There's so much to do. You can spend a long time here. Where can people go for kind of like a general overview of where to start?
Explorewy.com. So that's for Rock Springs and Green River, Wyoming. The list of rentals, the bus tour, everything's right there, one place.
All right. Well, I'm ready to check out the river, so let's head back there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Be sure to stay tuned. We'll be out here the rest of the day at Green River, Rock Springs, Wyoming. This place is so beautiful.
And that's all I have and I would take any questions if you had them.
Well, thanks, Janessa. We appreciate you coming over and keeping us updated on all the good things you guys are doing. It's, it's the exciting stuff we get to talk about and sometimes we don't have that up here. So it's a nice change of pace. And I just wanted to point out, you know, some of the wayfinding that Janessa spoke to. If you look at the signs throughout the city of Green River, they're very well installed and they look very professional. And when you get to Rock Springs, it's quite the opposite. And she mentioned, you know, serving on the beautification committee, which I also served with her on, and she's done a tremendous job of trying to find funding to ensure that we can update those signs. Some of them are half the signs missing or they're faded or they're loose. And so they're pointing the wrong direction. It seems like a small thing, but as you all know, I mean, any of the different areas we're traveling around to, if there's not proper signage, it makes it kind of difficult and you miss out on a lot of the, you know, unique opportunities that, you know, our areas have. So I commend, you know, Janessa and the Travel and Tourism Board for kind of taking that. I think it has a huge impact on the local community, especially when you have big events like, you know, the National High School Finals Rodeo coming to town. So that's going to be a tremendous, I guess, uplift for the city of Rock Springs and Green River, it sounds like, if they can utilize that on the riverwalks. So one other comment I just wanted to make quickly was the work you guys have done on the All-American Road and she mentioned about turnouts and, you know, trying to get more attractions. That would be upheld with some of this that's going on with the BLM and Janessa served as an advisor on that task force. But, you know, just something as simple as a turnout for people to get out and, you know, view the different areas. Some of that has restriction based off of the alternatives within that RMP. And so, I mean, it has a huge effect aside from all the other things we've been discussing. So I guess kudos to you for the job you guys do and it's exciting to see all the continued progress you're making.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Questions or comments, commissioners?
Take the bus tour. Commissioner Slaughter and his wife and I took the bus tour last year. It was great.
Yeah, Commissioner Richards did as well.
You can actually see things, but when you're driving, you can't really look.
Yeah, they do a great job. Lucy Dickens and Don Dale, they do a great job guiding that tour. I'm really proud of how it's turned out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Janessa for coming in, giving us an update. You know, it looks like you're doing wonderful things. As Commissioner Toman said, you know, my wife and I really enjoyed the bus tour. It shows a lot of great things about Sweetwater County and the Flaming Gorge. I love that. And I really enjoyed the videos that you've got. I think that that's exactly what we need to promote our area. And it looks like you're doing a wonderful job with that. So I commend you and appreciate the opportunity to listen to you this morning.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. I'll send you a link to all of our videos too, so that you'll have that if you need it.
Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, Janessa, I'd like to thank you as well, but I hope that in the future, there are lots of opportunities with you to get together with Mark Tesoro and SWAT and hopefully that comes to fruition and I think the potential there is tremendous. So hopefully that all works out.
Absolutely. We're obviously the marketing engine of the county, so we're ready. When that's ready, we're ready. Thank you.
I asked Janessa about the Office of Tourism Board. She reached out and has applied to that. I hope that's okay to share, but she asked for a letter of support. So I wrote that on behalf of myself, not all of us, but I'm confident that we are all behind you with that. So any schmoozing we can do next week, we'll be sure to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it greatly.
Looks like that's it, but we appreciate you coming over. I know we're a little bit behind, so thanks for being patient with us and we'll look forward to more progress. Next up on the agenda, commissioners, is an introduction to the School of Energy Resources and Focus in Sweetwater County. I believe we've got Holly Krupka, the Executive Director of the University of Wyoming School of Energy Resources, as well as I think Christie, maybe not.
Well, I just have to thank Holly. I know it's a short timeframe that we're giving you. I've attended two of their workshops. One in Craig, Colorado last fall. It's a two-day workshop. She has to boil down to fifteen minutes. So thank you. Thank you for joining.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Toman, and thank you to all the commissioners for hearing me. So I'm, hold on to your seats. I'm going to go really fast to talk about the School of Energy Resources. We have a really large program, but really grateful for our collaboration. We have quite a few projects in the Sweetwater area, including collaboration with your community college and even your airport director, who will, you'll hear from next. So I put together a few slides that I'm going to run through and I'm going to go really fast, but I did submit these, so you'll have them afterwards. So let me just share my screen. Okay, can you see my slides?
We can.
Okay, perfect. So the School of Energy Resources is a unique entity. We have a mission that spans academics outreach and research. And today I'm going to talk mostly about our research function and also highlight our work in Sweetwater County and some of the things that we've done recently and some upcoming projects. So in terms of what we do at the School of Energy Resources, we were established by the state to focus on energy-driven economic development. We're one of the people that come and stay in your hotels and really appreciate all that you do on, from the last presentation, all you do to host, be great hosts for us. Because we have a lot of work. Sweetwater County is really important to meeting our mission. And really, so what we're focused on is the state chooses to take a small amount of revenue from the energy and extractive sector and reinvest it back into that sector here at the University of Wyoming. And the state's only four-year research institution. Now, while we're part of the University of Wyoming, we have a separate governance board that says Energy Resources Council. These folks are appointed by, or nominated by the governor and confirmed by the Senate here in Wyoming. Essentially mostly made up of energy industry executives. We are currently about a twenty-one to twenty-five million dollar a year organization. That number can vary depending on if we're drilling a well or not, if we have big field projects. And what we do with this funding, some of it comes from the state, quite a bit of it comes from external federal grants. We have industry support, is we have our own internal research and team. But we also support folks across the University of Wyoming and really across the state to look at Wyoming-specific energy issues. So last year, last fiscal year, we supported about two hundred and fifty-nine people. And we're actually very much poised to grow in the future. In twelve months, we receive ninety-five million dollars worth of federal funding because there's just such an influx into the areas we work on. So we're looking forward to a lot of growth in the future. But it's not just us operating in a silo here. One of the things I want you to walk away from my presentation with is understanding that we work across the university and really across the state in a collaborative way to tackle challenges that face the state of Wyoming. So we do also offer undergrad degrees. I'm going to go quickly through this. But again, we work with departments across campus, so we offer a Bachelor of Science in Energy Resource Management Development and two concentrations. One's Landman and one's Energy and Environmental Systems. So really, these are the folks that put together energy deals and work on things like reclamation and permitting. I'm going to keep going. We have a number of outreach events as Commissioner Toman referred to. We have conferences around the state and sometimes even beyond. We also put out public materials on novel energy technologies. We are, I think, an independent source. We work on these technologies, but we're not a for-profit company, obviously. So for, just as an example, in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide, you can see a guide that we put together. It's called What Every Wyoming Landowner Should Know About Carbon Capture and Storage. So really trying to provide information to Wyoming landowners, really to help them understand what are their rights in terms of carbon storage. They're getting approached for these projects and understand what are their rights and how should they go about figuring out what their pore space is worth. And pore space is just some, the area under your land that you can lease where the CO2 would be stored. And so landowners can be approached to lease that and we're trying to help them understand what that will be worth. So our research program is the biggest part of what we do. We are divided up into Centers of Excellence. We have some that are run across by tenure track faculty in other colleges across the University of Wyoming. And then we have our own internal research department. So our own centers are those listed in yellow and they're very applied. So we're going to run projects that are out in the field, very large scale. Whereas we fund cutting-edge research that's earlier stage across the University of Wyoming. And this is a select list of topics of things we work on. So our biggest areas are carbon capture, use and storage and carbon engineering, which is another way of saying, looking at non-energy uses for Wyoming coal. So really what we're trying to do is work across the state to really find new uses or to protect our incredible energy and mineral production. We don't only work in Wyoming, though. The state of Wyoming exports well over ninety percent of its energy and mineral resources. So we have started reaching out to partners outside the state as well. So you can see areas that would be potentially important to Sweetwater would be carbon capture and storage, rare earths and critical minerals, potentially wind, produce water management policy and nuclear. It's just a few. So just to give you an example of the type of thing, I did want to highlight a couple successes we've had in the past. So our Center for Air Quality is actually run in the College of Engineering and Physical Sciences and in the Atmospheric Sciences Department. And this team, we fund them, but it's a team of researchers that really have engaged with Wyoming's natural gas producers, particularly in the Jonah Field area, which is at least on your side of the state. And they've worked with the producers to identify methane leaks. So our natural gas producers on the west side of the state were really at risk of having to shut down their operations due to emissions that were causing ozone. And the incredible work by this team and then the producers actually reduce those emissions, stop those ozone events and in turn created essentially a new natural gas product for Wyoming. We have a lower methane intensity in natural gas, meaning that it has a lower carbon footprint. And today, our producers, really Pure West and Jonah Energy, are actually able to sell their natural gas at a higher price. So instead of being shut down, they are now having a premium product on the market. And we're trying to see what we can do to help further that market through quantification and other research. So that's a success story from the past and still really honored to work with these producers on the west side of the state. So our biggest area is carbon capture and storage. So we've been working on this as a state for decades and now it's starting to come to fruition as a technology that's being deployed. We are working on the Sweetwater Carbon Storage Hub. So with our commercial partners Frontier Carbon Solutions, the Department of Energy has selected the University of Wyoming School of Energy Resources and our partners for a fifty million dollar grant to start developing a carbon storage field. And of course, that's Sweetwater County. So this is an incredible economic development opportunity. And it also supports the longevity of our existing resources like our Trona facilities and might invite new industries like a direct air capture, where you're actually pulling carbon out of the air. So I know I'm going really fast and I apologize, but ten minutes. And we just have so much going on in Sweetwater I wanted to talk about. So the Sweetwater Carbon Storage Hub is the recipient of the first three Class Six permits in the state. So you're pioneers in this, in your county. And Class Six is of course the type of permit you need if you're going to store CO2 in the subsurface. So we are also, so Commissioner Toman mentioned a workshop she attended that was focused on rare earths and critical minerals. So we're looking, rare earths are, are elements that are found in all kinds of aspects of our everyday life. They're used for things like magnets and energy generation. all kinds of aspects of our everyday life. They're used for things like magnets and energy generation. And um, they're pretty much all produced in China. So we have a real national security issue. So currently we're working on can we find these in Wyoming? And the answer is we can. Um, we have about five million dollars worth of projects to start looking around the state. We have a lot of work to do in this space, but we have some found some promise. And in particular, we're looking at where we can find these associated with Wyoming's coal basins. Um, so a lot of work going on there and trying to essentially build a new industry. This is an example of an industry that is farther out, but we always, we have these near-term industries that we're working on like carbon capture and storage, and then these that are farther out into the future. Um, in addition to that, obviously we have nuclear growing Wyoming's always been the largest year or has recently been the largest uranium producer in the U.S. We'd like to see uranium production grow again in the state. But the University of Wyoming beyond uranium didn't have a lot um, happening when the Terra Power Project was announced. So we stood up a center of excellence on that. Um, to date, um, we received some base funding from the state to really get that going. Two, two million dollars from the state has leveraged two point four million dollars in external funding and that's still growing. So we're also trying to put together um, a certificate program to retrain workers to work in nuclear. We're trying and we're working with a Western um, community college on on um, collaborating on that as well. So lots going on. And then last, I just wanted to highlight, we have a center that's focused on energy regulation and policy analysis. And one of the things that we did, obviously you've talked already a lot about BLM, very concerning to all of us, especially focused on our mission. So behind the scenes, our policy team ran the economics on the different um, plans or in the different scenarios and um, and came up with like the the financial impact to Wyoming. It's something we've done previously. So when the federal administration released the moratorium on federal oil and gas leasing, when they first came into office, our um, economics professor ran the impact on that. So we're trying to use our resources here across the University of Wyoming, come up with really hard facts and data that can be used to push back against some of these um, these burdensome restrictions on our energy and mineral production. So we were behind the scenes on this one. We will be publishing this work, but we had to get it to the folks writing comments um, before we could publish it just due to the timing of all this. So trying to be helpful in any way we can. So the other thing I'd just like to highlight is the biggest honor we have over here at School of Energy Resources is creating high-tech jobs. Our focus on supporting the state of Wyoming, we have a lot of Wyoming natives working here and lots and um, the over seventy-five percent of our folks working here on our full-time staff have at least one degree from the University of Wyoming. So able to give them great jobs in the state going forward. So I don't know if that was ten minutes, but I really appreciate you um, giving me the opportunity to speak and for all the collaboration we have across Sweetwater County.
Well, thanks Holly. No, and we appreciate you trying to jam that into ten minutes and be respectful of our time. We it's one of those where we try and learn as much as we possibly can, but we try and keep to a strict schedule too. Sometimes we're good at it, sometimes we're not, but that was a great presentation. And like you said, we have had it in our packet here, so that allowed us some time to review ahead of this. Um, but we appreciate you presenting to us today. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Just thank you very much. It was hard for me to boil down the two-day conference, but you did a great job of boiling down everything.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Slaughter.
Holly, I'd just like to commend you. That was a very, very good presentation done as quickly as you did it. You're very articulate speaking that quickly. I'd like to sit in when you have a little bit more time and you have a little larger presentation. If this is a small presentation, um, it would be very interesting to sit down when you have some time and have a large presentation. So thank you very much for the information. There's a lot of really good information there for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Holly, thanks a lot. Um, you mentioned in the last slide, the RMP and and then there's a ta- section for wind solar right of ways. And then if we go back to the map, um, it's fine. It's uh, the Wyoming Carbon Safe Projects and I'm following the the red dotted line for the proposed pipeline. Does that, it's kind of hard to tell on the map, but does that pipeline go through any BLM land or kind of looks like maybe some corner crossings or I'm not really sure. And maybe what effect the RMP would have on that?
That's a great question. Um, I don't think we've that the RMP, we haven't been able to like translate that into the impact on any of our projects that were pre-existing that. So um, but we we will, this is um, this dotted line is a theoretical pipeline, but we still have to do all the work during the course of the project. So certainly that dotted line is not a finalized path. Uh, we would probably try to avoid federal lands and to the greatest extent possible, but um, certainly it's just um, what we put in our proposal. Um, not, not anything finalized that happens during the course of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Well, Holly, thanks for your time today. That's a lot to take in, but a lot of exciting information. So keep up the good work and we'll continue uh, to look forward to learning more.
Well, maybe I can pique their interest now to attend one of your conferences. Uh, isn't the one next year, uh, your energy conference going to be in Utah? The one that you had in Craig, similar to that one?
We could have that one in Utah. Yeah, we also have a number of them across the state and including here in Laramie. So perhaps um, if it's okay, I'll send you um, a list of all our different conferences because we do have quite a few that we host.
Okay, thank you.
You want to host us in the Wildcat or down there in Laramie? That would be acceptable too. Thanks for your time, Holly. We appreciate it.
During a football game.
All right. It looks like we fell. We're about twenty minutes behind, but we'll keep tracking along here. Next up, we've got Devin Brewbaker, the Airport Director, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport here to give his airport update. Long time no see, sir. And good morning to you.
Good morning.
So before I get started, I got three comments. Number one, Commissioner Toman, I really appreciate you taking one for the team and being such a great liaison uh, by making sure that the other four commissioners showed up at our master plan meeting. So really appreciate you taking one for the team.
That's a giver.
Yes, I was waiting. That's why I came early was I was waiting for that.
Missed my punchline for her.
That'll be reflected uh, when I go to the ballot box later this year. Um. Number two, uh, I need to talk to Sally uh, about scheduling because I cannot follow Janessa and Holly. It's just not fair. Uh, Janessa's a rock star getting to serve on that board and see what she does all the time for our community is amazing. And uh, just it's great to see her come out and present that. And then Holly uh, is one of my best friends in the state. Holly is a fantastic ambassador for all energy development in the state and here in Sweetwater County. Her and her team are fantastic. I would encourage you to take the time to get to know them, attend their conferences, go visit them out in Laramie. Uh, they do fantastic work. They've been a huge resource to myself and the airport. Um, and it's been a pleasure and honor getting to work with Holly and her team. So uh, Sally, next time, please warn me so that I'm not following those two. Uh, because the bar has been set too darn high. So with that, I will get started. I will not be able to talk as fast as Holly did, so I'll do my best though. So a couple of updates that we have for you. I forgot to bring my printout, so I apologize. I'll be looking down at my slides occasionally here. Um, when I was before this group and not all of you were sitting up here, but when I was before this group in December of twenty-two, I did a update on twenty-twenty-two and the title of the slide was twenty-twenty-two, A Year of Stifled Recovery. Well, I didn't change it much because it's been another year of stifled recovery for the aviation industry. Uh, we've experienced a post-pandemic honeymoon of sorts where there's been an immense amount of demand for air travel. The problem is, is most airlines and airports are unable to meet this increased demand due to lack of available labor, aircraft and air traffic congestion that exists across the country. Additional challenges are likely, especially for communities like ours, small rural communities. Furthermore, increased operating costs have created long-term uh, uncertainty, in my opinion. This is my opinion of the industry. Uh, the higher cost structure that the airlines are now experiencing, um, something's going to have to give eventually. When you have a pilot group in one specific airline getting twelve billion dollars of additional compensation over a four-year period uh, on top of what they were already getting, uh, something's going to have to break. Either fares are going to skyrocket nationwide or these airlines are going to eventually go bankrupt, um, which is a cycle that tends to happen in the industry, unfortunately. So uh, I I predict, uh, and this is my twenty years of experience talking here, I predict some uncertainty in the future in the airline industry. Continuing uh, the theme that we talked about last year, we are in a crisis level situation when it comes to labor, uh, both on flight crews and also aircraft maintenance. And we're also now dealing with it in air traffic control and even uh, positions like ramp workers, uh, fuelers, um, customer service agents and so forth. So most industries are dealing with labor challenges. The aviation industry is exceptional in that area. To to make matters worse, how that's impacting communities is a hundred and I'm sorry, three hundred airports have lost up to twenty-five percent of their air service. And a hundred and sixty airports, including ours, have lost more than twenty-five percent of their air service since the beginning of the pandemic. So those numbers are pretty devastating. Major US and US passenger and cargo airlines hired an astounding twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-five new pilots in twenty-twenty-three. That followed a year that was approximately thirteen thousand in twenty-twenty-two. But interestingly, we only produce as a country five to seven thousand new pilots a year. So the math doesn't work. If you do that simple math and that creates an imbalance in supply and demand when it comes to that labor uh, force, and that's why you see pilot union agreements with ten, twelve billion dollars of additional compensation over a four-year period because supply and demand. What has caused that? Um, there's really inflow and outflow issues. You have the fifteen-hundred-hour rule, which I talked about at length in twenty-twenty-two with you all. And that has to do with the minimum hours needed to get your uh, airline transport pilot license. Uh, that rule passed back in uh, went into effect in twenty-twelve by Congress. And that had a drastic impact on the cost to be get to that point of an airline transport pilot. Uh, the cost of training is was extreme and up until recently, the low uh, early career salaries made it where people were not getting into that career. I stand before you today as an airport director because I made a career decision after my freshman year of college to stop pursuing airline pilot, which is what I was going to school for. Uh, I stopped pursuing that and switched to management because the economics didn't make sense. So I'm just one example out of thousands, tens of thousands over the last decade that made a career decision based on the economics of the airline industry. On the outflow, we have a massive amount of retirements that are happening this decade. We we experienced a huge amount of pilots coming in uh, post-war veterans that would come in and transfer over from the military to airlines. Those baby boomers are retiring mandatory retirement age of sixty-five for an airline uh, transport pilot. So that's impacting the uh, increased outflow pilots. We have the significant increase in demand for air travel, which we've talked about. And then the new uh, entrance during, even during the pandemic, we had two new airlines uh, come to fruition. Avello and Breeze. They had to, they had to hire pilots. They had to create uh, space. The industry had to create space for those pilots. So it's really a macroeconomic issue that's causing the pilot shortage that's going to persist well through the rest of the decade and and likely beyond. I mentioned earlier, the communities that uh, had twenty-five percent uh, loss or less and then twenty-five percent or more. This map shows that. So the red dots are more than twenty-five percent of air service lost. The yellow dots are less than twenty-five percent. And then the black dots are uh, losing all of their service. They lost in all their service entirely. And I can email this out to you after I apologize that I didn't have it in your packet. I put it together about an hour ago. So I will email it out to you after the meeting. With all that said, there is some hope. Captain attrition rates, uh, which is where the biggest issue is. Uh, at regional carriers like SkyWest are beginning to subside, so they're losing less pilots per month, which is a good thing. Uh, ultra-low-cost carriers, uh, airlines like Spirit, Frontier, um, Breeze, Avello, they've announced, oh, as well as cargo carriers FedEx, UPS have announced that they're either slowing or pausing hiring. Uh, FedEx has even asked their pilots, they've worked out a deal that has said, please stop flying with us, go fly with this regional carrier and they will give you a signing bonus for FedEx pilots. They're trying to get them to leave because the demand is is dropping. So that is, well, that sounds bad. That's bad for overall macroeconomic uh, headwinds and things that are happening globally with demand. Uh, in terms of the pilot shortage, those are signs that that the situation is easing a little bit. Airline pilot contracts have all been agreed to. Um, there's still quite a few flight attendant and other type of uh, agreements that aren't out there. But all of the pilot union agreements at the major carriers have been finalized. There's been a lot of labor uncertainty over the last couple of years with the increase in pay. That helps stabilize the industry. That helps. While I told you earlier, it destabilizes it. It helps stabilize people wanting to get into the career field. When you know that you can graduate college making six figures flying a regional jet now instead of thirty thousand dollars, that is of interest to folks, knowing that you're going to cap out up nor- near a million or even north of a million dollars flying for a uh, large carrier doing international long-haul flights. So there's a, there's an immense opportunity for folks that want to get into flying now. And then despite aircraft manufacturing delivery delays, airlines like United have robust growth plans in key markets that's that support our community like Denver. So we're excited for those opportunities. More growth in Denver means more connectivity for our community um, in terms of additional destinations, additional flights, uh, additional options. Continuing in a positive light, uh, well, maybe I'll start with a little bit of a negative. We're currently operating at nine weekly round-trip flights. That's based on a daily AM departure and PM arrival. And then on Thursdays and Saturdays, we have our midday arrival and departure. Based on the latest information in our conversations, uh, we're hoping to see the return of the second flight daily by this summer. Um, I just got an email about thirty seconds before I walked up here to hold a last-minute meeting this afternoon about this very topic. So things are moving very quickly and I'm hopeful to be back before you with news in the very near future on getting us back to pre-pandemic flight levels, which would be fantastic. Uh, passenger numbers and uh, demand in our community have remained strong. There, the demand outpaces pre-pandemic demand. We just don't have the capacity to support that demand. So getting these flights back will be really, really important. It'll take time though, for us to rebuild the market. Uh, travelers uh, build habits. And so they build the habit of, oh, I'll just fly out of Salt Lake or I'll drive to Denver or I'm just going to drive to my vacation. So once we get the flight back, it'll take time to make sure we get out in the community, market that, make sure that the community knows that the the flights are there, they're reliable, they're affordable. Um, and that's going to take some time. So when we see the flight return, uh, be aware that likely the initial billings under the MRG, uh, the initial several months will be much higher billings. Uh, but on a positive note, because of the reduced flight uh, capacity we've had over the last several years, we've hardly paid. Uh, well, it's been a very small percentage of the overall MRG that we've actually paid. So we've saved money, if you will, that will allow us to ramp up these flights moving forward. Um, and then maybe not so good news is I would anticipate that starting July first, we will likely have new contract rates with SkyWest. The contract that the state has with SkyWest allows for a re-opener. And because of the rapid escalation of labor, uh, maintenance and and materials costs that the airlines have uh, ex- uh, experienced, that cost is going to get passed on to us. I don't know what those numbers look like yet, but I I would be very confident in telling you that I'll be back before you, letting you know of a cost increase uh, for July first for air service. Um, so I very transparent today, there's not, there's going to be some good news and some news that's not so welcome, but I want you all to not be surprised by it when I do come back and and there are number increases. So.
We knew you were coming for a reason.
I can even tell you about the budget increase.
Oh, I'm about to. We're, we're getting there. Uh, so update on the commercial terminal. Um, as you're aware, the project and the the overall situation is still in litigation. Our trial has been moved back to March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five for that project. Um, we're anticipating a three to four week trial uh, when we get to that point. Um, so uh, I'm happy to, as you know, that's uh, a lot of that's under-protected conversations with legal counsel. Um, happy to have separate conversations with you if you, if you want more detailed updates. Uh, but I can't really do that. But I can't really do those in a public setting. I can let you know that the board filed, well, our legal counsel, under direction of the board filed a motion for partial summary judgment, I believe back in September. We went in front of the court November 16th. And about two and a half weeks ago, we received a ruling for that motion for partial summary judgment. And the court found in our favor on that. So it was a significant milestone in the litigation that we, we're still evaluating how it impacts the rest of the case. But it is a positive development that the court did find in our favor on a significant component of the litigation. And that was largely whether the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price and the schedule and the scope of work existed or did not exist. And that has been found in our favor that it did exist. So that's favorable.
Just a quick question. You had said that the litigation was set from March 17th of 2025. The slide said 24.
It is 25, my apologies for the typo.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
If you were going forward.
I still am typing 2023 too, so just bear with me that.
I apologize for stopping you.
No, no. Yeah, it's March 17th, 2025. I wish it was March 17th, 2024. My attorneys do not, but I wish it was March 17th, 2024. So the summary judgment ruling, we're, like I said, we're still evaluating the impact on the rest of the the trial or the case on that, but it was a significant ruling by the court. With that said, legal costs continue to accrue and will have a significant impact on our fiscal year 25 budget requests. I, the board has not approved a preliminary budget to propose to you all yet. We will do that at our February meeting. But the increase, the preliminary numbers are looking significant. The legal costs are just, they're alarming. The challenge is, is we feel strongly, the board feels strongly that we are stewards of the public dollars. We're stewards of the federal dollars, the state dollars, the local dollars that have been contributed to this project. And it's important that we protect the, the stakeholders that are part of this project. And that's why we're continuing with the litigation. We recognize the costs are significant, but it's important that we're, we're stewards for, for you all, for the federal partners, the state partners, the local taxpayers. And we need to, we need to hold folks accountable. And so that's the direction the board has taken. But it will have an impact on our financial situation moving forward. With, on a positive note, our new C Mar has been selected. I think you're all aware that we terminated the contract of the initial C Mar. The new con, the new C Mar has been selected and is under contract. It's Q and D construction from Reno, Nevada. They specialize in airport terminal projects. They are building, they build terminal projects all across the country and this is their specialty. We're excited to have them under contract. Commissioner Toman mentioned that we have a special board meeting at five o'clock today. The board will be considering amongst other items on the agenda, a motion to award phase one early work to Q and D construction. And that will be to largely construct the temporary facilities. I think you all have caught wind of that. If I haven't updated you independently about it, we'll be building a temporary sprung structure terminal as well as office trailers to move all functions out of the existing terminal into temporary facilities for the duration of the project. And that will, that's part of the phase one early work. And then sanitary sewer improvements that were part of the original project are part of phase one as well. So tonight at five o'clock, the board will be having a special meeting to consider that. And once again, a few other things on the agenda, but that's the primary reason for calling the special meeting. The board has received a GMP, a new guaranteed maximum price proposal from Q and D. Significant project cost increases are as anticipated. So we knew that the project was going to cost more moving forward. We're still evaluating that. I don't have numbers to share with you all today because we're still working on value engineering and negotiating the rest of the GMP. But there is significant cost increases. I traveled down to Denver on Friday to meet with the FA to present what we needed from them to move this project forward. And they are committed to trying to find the resources to help us. So that work is still ongoing and I'll keep you all updated as I learn more. But we're doing everything we can to get funding from the feds, the state and take care of that before we were to come to any local funding partners for assistance there. Obviously, any of these costs are items that we will be pursuing in the ongoing litigation. But we can't wait till March of 25 to move this project forward. We need to, we got it, we can't let it sit longer. We got to get the project done. And if we can recoup the damages through the litigation, that's, that's the ideal situation. We just don't have the money in the bank to be able to bankroll the project until that time, so. So we're working through those items. We're going to switch to some updates on other projects. Our snow removal equipment building, that litigation is ongoing as well with the same C Mar. The trial is set for January of 2026 and that date is correct. That trial is all the way out into January of 2026. Same thing, legal costs will continue to accrue in fiscal year 25 and into fiscal year 26, based on that trial date. So don't have any other litigation updates to share with you on that one. Other current projects, four of the five of you talked about the airport. Matt, well, I guess the fifth one did, but four of the five of you showed up at a master plan public meeting. And we are well underway on our 20-year master plan as Commissioner Slaughter mentioned in his comments. That's required by the FA for the airport to do every 10 years. And it's based on, we do a forecast analysis based on FA approved forecasts. We evaluate current conditions at the airport. We evaluate what needs are needed to meet the forecasted demand. And then whatever that delta is, is what the master plan addresses. It's not a strategic plan, it's not a business plan. It is not a services plan. It is solely based on infrastructure and capital improvements to make sure the airport can meet the forecasted demand over the planning period. So that project will wrap up probably around June-ish timeframe. Our next public meeting will occur probably around May timeframe. So we'll definitely get that information out to everybody. And we're excited to see that wrap up. We were successful in pursuing ARPA water and sewer project funds from SLIB as part of the Congress, or not the congressional legislative appropriation there. And so we're underway on a water and sewer upgrades project that makes numerous improvements to our water and sewer system. I think everybody here, once again, is aware that we don't have any connection to the city or the county on water or sewer, so we have to manage all of our own systems up at the airport. So we're doing some remediation efforts on our water system to make sure that we stay compliant with DEQ and EPA requirements. And then on our sanitary sewer, we're putting in a low-pressure sanitary sewer system that will serve the entire airport instead of having multiple septic fields across the whole property. That puts us at risk of future infractions with regulatory oversight. So we'll be working to bring that into a single sanitary sewer system using pressure, a low-pressure system across the whole property. The other project that is awarded and will start construction this summer is runway 321 and associated taxiway lighting rehab. The lighting on that taxiway and those, or that runway and those taxiways is over 20 years old. The FA says we should replace it every 10 years. And so that project has finally gotten funded in large part by the federal government, 93.75% from the feds, 3.75 from the state and two and a half percent local. Total project cost is about $1.8 million to do that project. That was awarded to ECI here locally to do that project. We also are under contract to procure a high-speed runway broom, snow removal equipment. So we have to maintain the airport to certain standards. And one of the, one of the last pieces of equipment that we don't have is a front mount broom that allows us to make sure we can get down to clear pavement on the runway for aircraft to operate. And then the last project that we're currently on is we're converting our old SRE building to aircraft hangar space. And that project was awarded to a pleasant construction here locally. And I forgot to mention the water and sewer project was awarded to Jackman Construction here locally. So all the projects, most of the projects we're doing, we're trying to keep those dollars as local as possible within the confines of public procurement law and such, so. And then on, on the horizon, we are in the final stages of doing a land use change with the Federal Aviation Administration to allow for the construction of a cell phone tower at the airport for Verizon Wireless and other carriers. That has the potential over a 40-year lease term to generate $1.3 million revenue for the airport. So we're pretty excited for that. We are under lease and contract with a new aircraft maintenance business coming to Sweetwater County. They are currently based in Minnesota and they're looking to open a second location. They've signed a long-term lease for that building that we're converting to hangar space to lease that entire building from us. So they are under lease for a long-term lease and that lease starts on March 1st. So we're less than a month away from that starting. That'll bring jobs and economic activity to the community, which is great. As mentioned by Ollie in her presentation, and some of you saw this at our master plan, we are neck deep in working on carbon capture utilization and sequestration at the airport. We are under contract with Frontier Carbon Solutions on a collaboration agreement to look at developing, or looking at opportunities to develop a decarbonization hub at the airport. We would be the first airport in the world to have an airport-based decarbonization hub. I would expect more updates and news on that coming in, in the next several months. But it's a phenomenal opportunity for the airport to meet our customers' needs while supporting a industry that's growing in Sweetwater County, while also monetizing the assets of the airport, including the poor space underneath the property. So we're excited for that opportunity. We're working on a supplemental AIP grant application to the FA. There's a NOFO, a notice of funding opportunity that'll be published next month that we're preparing for, for that. We're working with Congresswoman Hegeman's office on a earmark request for a project for fiscal year 25. We are in constant conversations with the city about the Level Two study for water east of Rock Springs, including Middle Baxter, Arrowhead Springs and the airport. So we're keeping a close eye on that. Looking at energy development at the airport, opportunities for solar. The airport board did a solar feasibility study a couple of years ago. And we're looking to do utility scale solar on some of the land at the airport as well as evaluating other forms of energy generation like microreactors. That's obviously a very new industry, but something that we're very interested in learning more about. We intend, once the terminal is done, to be working on enhanced, enhanced air service development efforts, including lessened daily service to some key destinations, places like Las Vegas and Phoenix, that we have a lot of folks that travel to, looking at opportunities to maybe have twice weekly flights to those types of destinations. So we're looking for opportunities there. We will be undertaking a revised strategic plan this year. We, last time we did it was pre-pandemic and so we want to take a fresh look at that as a board. And then for the first time in the airport's history, as a result of the master plan, we will have private hangar lots available for folks to lease from the airport to build their own private hangars on, instead of the airport building all the hangar space. It's an opportunity for private investment at the airport. And I'm trying to hurry here, I know you guys are tight on time. Why we do it, I like to remind you about the economic impact to the airport. This is based on 2020 data. We're working on an update likely in the next year or so. But 2020 data showed 20, just under 27,000 annual visitors that the airport supported, 324 jobs, $11.4 million of annual payroll, $21.2 million of annual spending, $1.4 million of annual tax revenue, with a total annual economic activity of just under $37 million that the airport supports. Once again, it's based on 2020, 2019 and 2020 data. We'll have updated information in the next couple of years. But it's really important. The airport supports our economic activity and we want to make sure we find ways to continue to support that. And that's all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Appreciate the support. The airport is my pride and joy. And I know it is for our board as well. And it's only possible with the support of the cities and the county and the community, so appreciate that.
Thanks Devin, and thanks for coming over. You've had plenty on your plate over the last year plus, and so we can reason with that. And I know there's a lot going on with the terminal and it sounds like it'll continue to be for the next couple of years, unfortunately. But hopefully you can get some progress with your new CMAR and get that project underway. Lots of good information. I'm sorry that our liaison couldn't attend that master planning meeting. We, four of us were sure to be there, but she hasn't shared really any of that information you had today with us. So we're going to have to look into that, but nevertheless, it's all good stuff. Some positive movements for the airport.
She did tell me that it takes four of you to do her job, though.
I was hoping someone would pick up on that.
Yeah, it took four of you to come to the meeting instead of just her.
Gathering national BLM.
There is an alternate take on that.
For her credit, she was Casper doing tremendous work with the BLM, so. I can't believe we didn't pick up on that in our comments, that was the plan. Any other comments or questions for Devon's report commissioners?
Thanks for covering my liaison duties because I would not have wanted to hit all those points. I would have missed a few.
Be hard not to. Well, thanks Devon, we appreciate your time and anything we can do to support you moving forward. We'll be anxious to see what this effect will have on budgets. I'm sure it won't be pretty, but thanks for keeping us in the loop and we'll see how it shakes out.
Absolutely, and I always like to make sure I remind you that open invitation, if any of you would like to ever come out to the airport, please just give me a call, shoot me a text. Happy to host you, happy to show you around. Commissioner, I know you've been drinking from a fire hose since the beginning with RMP and everything, but absolutely love to host you and your bride out at the airport when, when it makes sense. And any of you as well, happy to do it, so.
Sounds great. Thanks Devon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And next, under tab B is item number four. We've got resolution 24-02-CL-01, the authorization of a special prosecutor from the Sweetwater County Attorney's Office. We do have our chief civil deputy here, Mr. De Leon, to answer any questions. John, did you want to add anything to that?
It's pretty straightforward. This is a resolution authorizing a special prosecutor. As you know, if the county attorney determines that there is the appearance of a conflict or a conflict, he will reach out to another county attorney's office, ask for them to review and potentially prosecute the matter. In this case, Sublet, the Sublet County Attorney's Office has agreed to take it. There are no costs and it requires your approval. That being said, we would ask for a motion to approve resolution 24-02-CL-01.
Any questions on this resolution commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve resolution 24-02-CL-01, authorizing the appointment of a special prosecutor.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution 2402-CL01 by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, I believe, Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close an aye. Motion's unanimous. Next two items are with our Public Works Director. He was not here at this time, so with this, we're going to take a break. We are about 27 minutes behind the schedule. So we'll bump up, take a break, come back where we left off on a tab B5. So we'll take about a 10-minute break, we'll be back here, let's say 11:20.
You wouldn't have been so long-winded today.
Yeah.
All this meeting back to order. Where we left off under tab B was item number five. Which is a resolution to consider vacating a portion of County Road ninety, the American Methanol Road. With us this morning is Public Works Director Gene Legursky. Before we get started, I did want to mention in regards to the Farson Roads that Commissioner Tomlin was mentioning with the snow over the weekend. Gene sent us an update on that. And the plows and the motor graders in that area do have GPS on them. And so he was able to see what all was plowed and it was pretty significant. The employee up there spent twelve hours on Saturday plowing snow. And only took forty-seven minutes throughout that day for any break or lunch or things of that nature. That also included fueling up, so. There is a map in our email commissioners kind of demonstrating the areas that were plowed. Which is pretty, pretty remarkable. So I appreciate that, Gene, and thanks to Luke for his efforts up there. I know the wind, especially last year was certainly challenging, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So what you have before you, Chairman West, fellow commissioners, is a resolution to consider vacating a portion of American Methanol Road. A long time ago, American Methanol was supposed to come in here and build a plant. Part of that was the county was going to acquire some right-of-way for them. Through some state lands, some BLM and some private sections. That, for various reasons, American Methanol never moved in. And we're just trying to clean up stuff. The road was never built. Not all the road was ever built. There was a small portion that was built. We'd like to keep that because it does access one private piece of land, but we'd like to vacate it. Through the private land sections and the BLM. It has already been vacated through the state land section because the state land section, since the road was never built, had a ten-year reversionary clause on it, so that first mile is already gone anyway. So all we're trying to do is clean up stuff, so I'd like to start the vacating procedure with this. We're using the same statute that you guys are familiar with. We've been vacating and doing other things with the road. However, in that state statute, it says that the commission can actually initiate proceedings to vacate road instead of doing it formally by petition from the public. So that's what we're trying to do today is to start that proceeding.
Very good. Thanks, Gene. Any questions on this resolution commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four oh-two EN zero-one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion's unanimous. Next, under tab B is item number six. We've got a request to sole source Promatic trap equipment. Hand it back to Gene.
Thank you, Chairman West. What you have before you is a request to sole source equipment for the trap club. And typically, we do not sole source things. We go out to competitive bid. However, there are certain instances that we have in the county where source sourcing is needed. Either because it fits in with our system, fits in with our maintenance. Motor graders are a great example of that. We sole source those to Caterpillar because all of our motor graders are the same. They guarantee a buyback. They do different stuff like this. Promatics, the trap and the skeet throwers that are up there are aging back in December fifth. You guys actually passed a resolution to allow us to use some capital money for this. So we went out and got and found out that Promatics has regional dealers. They don't let people cross lines, so we can't even get a multiple, you know, competitive thing. Hey, we want Promatics, but we want it from three different vendors or anything like that. They have regional vendors. They don't let them cross over over lanes. The Promatics fits in with what we currently use. It fits in with the current call boxes that we have. We're not upgrading all of them. So it'd be really nice to be able to do stuff back and forth between this, so we're asking you to allow us to sole source these. The total price, we do, we have to get renewed quotes because they obviously added sales tax and everything like that. But I wanted to bring this to you first before we have them exclude the sales tax and do all that and get formalized quotes. But I wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with sole sourcing the Promatics throwers.
Thanks, Gene. Any questions commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the request sole source Promatic trap equipment as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tomlin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion's unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
I need a break. I had a couple tones arguing. Mr. Chairman.
Tomlin's gonna step out. Commissioners will continue on.
We're used to it by now.
We did bump that breakup early, so that'll take us to tab B, item number eight. And next up is the approval of the Division of Criminal Investigations Memorandum of Understanding for Federal Grant Purchases. With us this morning is County Grants Manager Christina Marshall, as well as Sheriff Grossnickel. Morning to you both.
Good morning. So this should be easy. So Chairman West and commissioners. The State of Wyoming's Division of Criminal Investigation, or DCI, applies for federal grants in which sometimes the sheriff's office can submit requests for supplies and equipments as part of their grant application. So the purpose of this MOU is to set forth the terms between DCI and the sheriff's office for purchasing those items and compliance. There is no term limit in this MOU. And the grant amounts will vary from year to year due to the the grant applications. So under this MOU, the actual funding is not passed through to Sweetwater County like a sub-recipient. Instead, DCI makes the direct purchase following the county's procurement policy. And then Sweetwater County accepts the supplies and equipment and maintains sole fiscal responsibility of the support and maintenance of the items. So it's unique that they don't want to do a sub-recipient agreement. It's it's a detail, but they're formalizing this process. They think it's easier. So although the purchases would not be reported on our, the county's schedule of expenditures of federal awards in the annual audit. Sweetwater County would still have to follow the Department of Justice's Grants Financial Guide for compliance. That is stated on page one of the MOU. So as a side note, the sheriff's office was already awarded funding for a copier under the Wyoming DCI's twenty twenty-one Adam Walsh Grant. And that grant, we could not apply for directly. So again, the county is piggybacking on their their grant application. Approval of this MOU will allow DCI to proceed with that purchase using quotes already obtained by the county's purchasing department. And finally, please sign in blue ink if you approve this. On your attachments, you have the MOU. I also did not print out that link of the Department of Justice's Grants and Financial Guide. It is a hundred and fifty pages. And I can assure you, I'm very familiar with those guidelines. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions or the sheriff is available as well.
Thanks, Christina. Appreciate the information. I would assume the auditors just love MOUs like this.
Mr. Chairman, in the grants world, everything is about documentation, process, processes, procedures, having written policies, yes. So, but this is to me odd. I would prefer a sub-recipient agreement to just pass through the money, but they have their reasons, so.
We'll take advantage either way. Any questions commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Division of Criminal Investigations Memorandum of Understanding for Federal Grant Purchases and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Next under tab B is item number nine. We've got the approval of a revised pre-employment contract for the Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office. With us this morning Sheriff Grossnickel, and good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
What, I know we approved, is this just an annual updated agreement, Sheriff?
No, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, what this is, is we added a section in there that provides for the same payback in that agreement if the employee is terminated for egregious misconduct.
Okay. Got it. Questions commissioners? If not. I'd entertain a motion to approve the revised pre-employment contract for the Sweetwater County's Sheriff's Office as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks Sheriff, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to tell him what our revised policy on consent agenda? Items?
Mr. Chairman, I was watching this morning.
I figured you were watching, yeah.
And and I can come explain that every time. It it. Our agency runs into this often, that if we replace a position. We always ask for the the most amount of money with payroll and benefits. That we could replace that with somebody that's coming in that's already certified. With law enforcement, patrol and detention, there's different certifications. So if somebody's brand new, they will come at a lower lower rate of pay. And we'd never know what the benefit's going to be if we have a family come in. So we always budget for the highest possible, knowing that we don't want to have to come back and ask for money if we do hire somebody that comes in at that level.
Yeah, so that's that's just your lateral movement versus hiring someone brand new off the street.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheriff.
Yeah, and and my point with respect to that was simply when we have talked about the consent agenda items in the past. When when it was simply a matter of an issue where the new person coming in may have differences in their family status for insurance purposes. That we would consider that same, but in looking at it with seeing the step and grade change, I felt like it was something that each of the commissioners should review at that point in time. So that was that was my point, and as I say, I I was in favor of the motion. I just felt like pulling it out and making sure everyone was aware was the right thing to do.
Right, and and Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Slaughter, I understand that. And again, we're kind of unique when that happens because of the different certifications through the uh through post.
Yeah, and I think there's been some in the past too that have fallen suit with that. It's always difficult because you never know what the insurance is going to be, so it always looks like it's an increase to the position most of the time. But I think yours is a little unique in that sometimes it's not just a direct replacement, so.
Correct, and and Mr. Chairman, most recently, we're seeing a lot of individuals from out of state that are already certified that want to come work for the agency, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next under tab B is item ten, we've got the approval of the two thousand twenty-four Sweetwater County Emergency Operations Plan. With us this morning is our Emergency Management Coordinator Emily Covey. As well as the Public Health Response Coordinator for the District Board of Health Rhonda Zankinella, good morning.
Good morning.
Almost afternoon, thanks for being patient with us.
Yes, today we come before you to ask for the Emergency Operations Plan two thousand twenty-four to be approved. The Emergency Operations Plan is updated every it's updated every two years, however, it's reviewed yearly. The E O P details what the facility or agencies will be doing during a disaster, an event, excuse me, or an event. It follows the Incident Command System. It basically guides everyone on what their job is going to be doing, what their what their purpose is in in an emergency. We concentrate on the four phases of the E O P, which is mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And so we ask that you review that and hopefully approve it.
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks Emily, thank you, Mr. Tomon, she gets a pilot over here, you gotta keep her in line.
Well, I just wanted to point out that our chairman stepped up to the plate, even though he probably didn't know that he was supposed to be at that snow emergency last year. He he was there on the scene for the snow emergency and so.
Yes, he participated in our E O C and very valuable because we needed you there. As you may remember, there was a declaration that needed to be signed, a declaration of emergency. So it's really important that, and this is what this is guided for, is our elected officials, for all of our responders. So we all speak the same language, we all know what our part is. So that's that is the basis of the of the Emergency Operations Plan.
Yeah, very educational and informative experience, one that I don't care to go through this winter, so we'll knock on wood on that. That was a lot of hate mail for those couple days there. Be sure nothing compared to what the sheriff's office was going through, but yeah, a stand-up job by everyone involved with that. On this, you said it's reviewed annually, but it's updated every two years, is this the updated version or is it?
The updated.
Okay.
And we do review it. It's reviewed during our L E P C meetings, which happen four times a year. Which we're happy that Commissioner Tomon has been attending. We have another L E P C meeting tomorrow, nine AM, the Justice Center. If any of you are interested or are free to come, but we cover so many different things. Hazard mitigation plans, analysis and exercises and drills. And we also bring in tomorrow Monique Mead will be there covering. The the bomb squad and what they do and terrorism. You know, it's it's the world we live in, so it's best to be prepared.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think the plan's very well written, so I appreciate all the effort that goes into that. It it's a very important forty-two pages and there was a lot of stuff, you know, in there that I wasn't aware of, so.
And I'd like to say that Rhonda Zankinella, our Public Health Response Coordinator, she had a big hand in in helping put this together. Anytime we have an emergency, a disaster, anything, an event. Usually, health is going to be a component of a disaster. So she has a big part in this as well.
Absolutely. Still taken back by the compliment I got from Commissioner Tomon. Is there any other questions or comments commissioners?
I couldn't top that one. Mr. Chairman, one quick question on it. With with this being the renovation, the year that you changed the plan, were there any significant changes that were made in the plan that you can talk about or refer?
The changes that were made, a lot of it stayed the same, but the verbiage changed so that it is easier to understand. It was just like, have you ever taken an I C S class online? And it's like a bedtime story by the time you get done. Well, it is not like that, it's not, it's changed.
It expanded on a great deal, so each section is still there, but additional details were put in to clarify and help people to understand what they need to.
Yes.
I I just, as I was going through it, trying to to understand and read it, there's a lot to it. I was just wondering, okay, what has changed from time to time with respect to it? Thank you.
We could also send you the old one if you'd like, so they can compare.
I'm not sure.
You want some more reading material?
Yeah, I just thought if there was anything major, you know, you could you could bring that to our attention. But I I think just having the new the new operations plan is.
We just expanded on on things for our community.
And ensured that it followed what happened, you know, when you were there.
In our name system.
E O C to make sure that all the plans aligned with the actual responses.
Well, next time we have an emergency, make sure our chairman reads the whole thing through and signs off before. I'm just kidding.
It's short-lived when you get a good one, it doesn't last very long. I did notice within the document, it identifies some of the different mayors. Do you present this same to them? I mean, obviously, if they're signing off on it, I would assume so.
Everybody in the county has to sign off, because if something were to happen, this is kind of like our insurance policy. You sign this, please help.
So that everybody understands their rules and responsibilities, and if they have, they don't agree with it, to work it out.
We can, yes.
Adjust to what they'll do, what they can do.
Very good, well, I think that's important, you know, especially on, you know, heaven forbid something tragic that takes place, that everyone has a you know, a plan in place and a mutual understanding of how to approach that. So I commend your efforts, I think it's something you hope you never have to use, but if you do, it's there and it's better to be prepared, so.
Yes.
Thank you for that, and I assume you will, but once you get all the signatures on that, if you could pass that along, we'll uh we'll use it when we need to, and hopefully we don't, but any other additional comments or questions commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four Sweetwater County Emergency Operations Plan as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to approve the Emergency Management Service Plan.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tomon, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion?
Can I have one more minute, please?
Sure.
One of our big things that we do with emergency management is we teach and preach preparedness. And I brought for you today a two-week ready packet on how to build a kit for emergencies. So I wanted to to give that out to you. One of the things that they say to put in your packet is something that if you're going to be there a long time, bring something that's going to entertain you. So I also brought you a deck of cards to put in your packet. And I also brought a picture here that one of our volunteers took of Commissioner Tomon.
Oh, boy.
Proof that she does put out fires.
Good thing she's got an SUV, I see how much information's on that flyer there, she's going to be prepared.
Thank you.
Well, I was in Casper, one of the commercials that came on TV was Governor Gordon holding up the big flyer for the twenty, be two-week prepared. It had pictures of a flood and a fire behind him. So he was promoting the have a two-week survival packet in your.
Yes.
Your car, your home, your office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the training, you you gals did a great job, I really enjoyed that.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the table still, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks Emily, thanks Rhonda, and thanks Kim for coming over.
And thanks for the picture, that proves that, you know, they can't give me too much trouble.
Hey Cindy, if you could mute Mary's mic, we are going to move forward into tab B, item number eleven. And next up, we've got the Treasurers Report for calendar year two thousand twenty-three, and with us this morning is Treasurer Mark Callen. Good morning to you, sir, thanks for hanging in there with us, we're about thirty minutes behind.
Good morning, I'll be quick, Mr. Chairman. Just give you a quick update of what happened last year, it was a busy year last year. Got some slides going there. Wanted to give a quick shout out to the employees that retired last year. We had, we had five employees that that left, four retired, you know, with Lona having twenty-seven years of service and Shelley twenty-two years of service. So long, longtime employees, a lot of talent that they brought, and and we're grateful for their service. What happened last year, well, we moved a lot of our funds into Wyoming Class. Where we held most of our funds, and then we also opened the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce location. We made payments to the component units a little bit different as distributions. We finalized new investment policy last year. We also put in a tracker investment software that I'll talk about a little later. We also are working with the hospital for their capital projects funding. And then we also implemented some G F O A training in the office, which which has been good to bring some of the staff up to speed. So talking about the Rock Springs Renewal Location, last year on Fridays only, from nine to four thirty. We did approximately thirty-seven hundred registrations at that location. So if calculated the miles, about ninety-six thousand miles saved for people driving from Rock Springs to Green River to get their registrations. Saved Rock Springs citizens about sixty-three thousand dollars. So pretty, pretty good thing, people love it over there, they appreciate the service. Quickly from the chambers asking me if we could do more days over there. I think we're going to stick with Fridays for now and just kind of see how that bears out. Last year, we had pooled cash investments with interest earning about two point eight million. Of that, the county earned approximately one point three million. And then one point four was dispersed to the schools, cities and towns. The way that works is we we invest all the money that comes in from the state. And as that money sits in our accounts before we distribute it to the schools or to the towns, that money's gathering interest and it's in our pooled cash account. And so we distribute that interest to them as well. So it doesn't just benefit the county, but it benefits the the schools as well. This is our first report out of our tracker software, which is pretty exciting. Kind of shows the distribution of where our investments are right now. We're still pretty heavily invested in the local government pool, Wyoming Class. I checked this morning, rates on return were five point three four in that fund right now. So we've we've started buying a little bit more duration, not as much because the market has been in up and down kind of crazy roller coaster the last couple of weeks. And so we're watching that closely. As we start to see these shorter-term markets change, we'll start to obviously invest in some more longer-term duration. We have about a little over a million in delinquent property taxes that we're working on collecting. A little over four million in that deferred mineral tax payments that's delayed, that will take some time for us to collect, but we are working with them. Those are those taxes because we started collecting monthly payments, and so those could be, those could take a long time. We have seen other counties collect those though. And then sales tax collections for this year are up seventeen percent, so that's kind of encouraging. Just highlighting the Craig Report, saying that mineral taxes are estimated to be down approximately ten percent according to to Craig. But it is encouraging that we have Project West coming, which should give us a boost as well. So just kind of keeping an eye on some things for the future of Sweetwater County. This year, we're focusing on staff professional development. We obviously have a bunch of new people, great people, very customer service oriented. They're they're hungry, they love doing what they do. The people in the back that have moved up into those positions are are taking hold of those positions and and trying to learn everything they can so that they can do their job appropriately. We also have a piece of legislation that we're pushing this year. Was in Cheyenne last week or two weeks ago, meeting with the governor and some of their representatives to talk about electronic vehicle registration, which would allow people to carry their registration electronically in their vehicle. So the goal is that you could just take a picture of your registration and carry that with you if you get pulled over. That would work just like your hunting and fishing, electronic hunting and fishing license and and your electronic insurance license. So the goal would be that, you know, for commercial operators, like myself, got many trailers out there, sometimes we lose those registrations, send people out. So this would help with that, will also help with with doing electronic registrations for people who live outside of the county seat and have to travel long distance. So what this does is it provides a thirty-day grace period for people to get their sticker on their vehicle. So they could register immediately, they would be legal at that point, and they would have thirty days to actually get that sticker and put it on their vehicle. So this is a pretty exciting piece of legislation for us, would help help our large county, I believe. We've been working on the Property Tax Relief Program. I know there's a lot of stuff in in the legislature this year on property taxes. I think the the treasures are kind of focused on that relief program because it really focuses on the people who are in in need, most need. I know that fifty percent initiative's going around where they want to take away fifty percent, and I don't believe that's the right thing. I think it's a it's a pretty big hammer for the problem, and and I think it provides relief to people who don't need relief across the state. So kind of against that, I think that the Property Tax Relief Program could help. There is a, there are a couple other pieces of legislation out there this year, there's a a new one that just got announced that if put through would eliminate all all of your personal taxes. And so with that, that would actually, if it goes through, it would actually eliminate your property or your vehicle registration taxes as well. And so we're kind of watching that one closely too. I don't know if that if that's going to going to fly or not. So there are some other things that are that are happening out there that we're keeping an eye on. I'll be down in Cheyenne as well to try and keep an eye on these things and see if we. as well to try and uh, uh, keep an eye on these things and see if we need to testify on any of those things that will affect our county. Uh, and then again, we're focusing on delinquent deferred tax collections this year. So hopefully we can get to, get those things brought to, to bear. That's it for the treasurer's office unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the annual update there and crazy to see how many registrations came through the chamber. That's, that's a lot of foot traffic. So I'm sure they're enjoying that too.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun. Uh, I, one, one of the folks that was there, she did uh, we, we did a calculation and she was doing a registration every minute and a half one day when she was there. So um, it's, the program works really good there. They're fast because they're just doing those renewals. So uh, people love it. It's been a good program.
Yeah, I've heard good feedback from it as well and uh, pretty alarming numbers on the pooled cash investments too, so. Any other comments, questions for Treasurer Cowan, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman, two, two quick comments. First of all, you know, I'd like to commend Mark on his ability and, and his outside-the-box thinking to come up with the idea to, to do the registrations in Rock Springs. I tried for several years to come up with a method to do that. And we never came up with the concept of just doing it on renewals. Um, which resolved what was the major issue was if, if we were going to try and do other renewals over there, um, we would have to have had clerk's office personnel and things of that nature. And it just didn't make financial sense. This was a really good plan and a good uh, good implementation that he's done. I really commend him on that. Second thing is I'm really jealous. Because about the last fifteen years that I was treasurer, our insurance, or our interest rates varied anywhere from about two-tenths of a percent to about a point and a half. So five-point-three percent really sounds good. And it's nice to see those numbers and, and what that interest adds up to because it is a big uh, addition to our funding capabilities here at the county. So keep up the good work.
Appreciate that, Mister Chairman, uh, Commissioner Slaughter. It's uh, it's definitely been challenging. Uh, I, I think that uh, the last report I said, saw said that rates haven't changed this much in over forty years. So um, jumping into this position and having this crazy rate volatility has been like drinking from a fire hose. Most days I spend uh, listening to economists and trying to figure out where we're going with this thing. Uh, so it's, it's definitely been challenging, but it's been a lot of fun. So appreciate those good comments though, Commissioner Slaughter.
Additional comments, questions, Commissioners? Mark, thanks for coming and keeping us informed on what's going on in your office. Keep up the good work and let us know if we can do anything further to support you.
Will do. Thank you much.
Next up under tab B is item number twelve. We've got a request for approval of the two thousand twenty-four Smith RX Plan Update and Amendment. With us this morning is HR Director Gary McLean. And we're about twenty minutes behind. So thanks for hanging in there with us, Gary. So that's my cue to hustle up. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Well, I normally just blame it on Mary, but she was being kind earlier, so.
Uh, I am going to take one more second to uh, give Mark a little shout out. Uh, one of the areas which we're going to discuss today where as Commissioner Slaughter pointed out, we can take advantage of the higher uh, revenue opportunities. We had a very good health insurance year last year, contrary to probably almost all other employers in the county. And so we'll have a fairly significant surplus, maybe one-point-two, one-point-three million. Coming this year, it sounds like a lot. Uh, as Rob knows, we'll have years where it's two million the other way. But the goal within that fund, because everybody's paying into that fund, is to find a fund level that we can maintain so that we can invest and help uh, defray the cost of those periods when it goes the other way. So this is a good opportunity for us to uh, work with Treasurer Cowan to try to leverage those good years to help minimize the impact of those years we know will come uh, for the bad year. So I appreciate uh, his diligence in that regard. And this is a good opportunity that will benefit not just county employees, but all of the component unit employees that participate uh, in the health insurance fund, which is a separate uh, fund, not part of the zero-zero-one county fund. And the second thing also, he sells himself a little bit short here. We've been working on improving uh, with him because it has importance to us also in many of the other departments, having a more robust accounts receivable system. So we can better track money that's owed to the county and make sure it's accounted for properly. That we just went through some training with his staff and other staff in the department to, to do that. And I think this year that um, that'll be uh, reap some rewards also, and that should be online in the near future. So, Mark, thank you very much. I appreciate uh, both of those. Um, the um, next three items are all um, issues related to uh, uh, open enrollment and renewal of our plan. The first one is a Smith RX, uh, which is our pharmacy benefit manager. So again, we're a self-funded plan. We contract with UMR to pay the bills for medical expenses and we contract with Smith RX to manage uh, the pharmacy uh, side of the equation for us. Um, since moving to Smith RX, we've saved significant money in the neighborhood of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand uh, just in the last eighteen months or so. Um, by getting some significant discounts and savings on really large uh, biologic pharmaceuticals. Um, so that's been um, a very good uh, uh, partnership. There's really no significant changes to the plan. The pharmacy, well, self-funded healthcare is largely governed by IRS rules. And so you'll see in there, there's an increase, which is an IRS increase in the deductible for high deductible plans. Enrollment for high deductible plans is only about thirteen or so. Um, so it doesn't affect a lot of people, but it's just in the deductible from fifteen-hundred uh, to sixteen-hundred and a similar increase uh, in the family side of there's. Um, like I said, there may be one or two people that are family under the high deductible plan. Um, from three thousand to thirty-two hundred is the increase. So that's probably the most significant uh, change there. Um, requesting the board um, to uh, a- approve uh, those amendments and authorize the uh, chairman to sign uh, the appropriate location.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions on this? Plan update and amendment, Commissioners? What did you say they were before? The sixteen-hundred and thirty-two-hundred?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The um, the deductible level four in individuals fifteen-hundred, it's now sixteen-hundred and family went from three thousand to thirty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four Smith RX Plan Update and Amendment and allow the chairman to sign any necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Next under tab B is item number thirteen, the request for approval of the HCC Life Insurance Company two thousand twenty-four stop-loss application. Hand it back to Gary.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, County Commissioners. Another rousing topic, uh, stop-loss. Um, but I don't want it said that I never have good news. So I do have a little bit of good news on this one. So um, as you know, um, we had it some, especially in two thousand twenty-one, very difficult years, a lot of large claims. Uh, large claims uh, are generally from a stop-loss perspective, meaning those over seventy-five thousand. The stop-loss limit's actually two-hundred thousand. So if we have a claim that exceeds, say, two-hundred thousand, goes to half a million, our plan will pay the half million and then we're reimbursed from the stop-loss insurer, the three-hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so the, the cost of stop-loss insurance is a function of the risk that they realize from your plan. And um, so we had some years of very significant uh, increases in stop-loss due to having, I think we had twenty-six large claims at one point. Um, this year was not that case. Um, and we now are down to one lasered claim. A lasered claim means that you have a risk that's known. It's not might happen, it's known. So if I have cancer today and I'm going to have cancer tomorrow and the next year, then they laser that claim because there's no, there's no uh, risk assessment. It's a guarantee. So we had four of those. We're down to one. Um, and um, which is uh, very significant for us because they laser to levels. So instead of two-hundred, the laser was a three eighty, I think. Um, so, so that's very significant and very positive movement. And uh, for the first time in a long while, we actually have a point-six percent reduction in the stop-loss um, expenses. So it's not a huge dollar amount, but it is reflective of uh, things moving in a positive uh, direction. So, um, back in two thousand twenty-one, when we had a lot of uh, claims in order to mitigate our risk and exposure to further uh, increased premiums, uh, we joined what's a kind of like a public risk pool for stop-loss, uh, which has been very beneficial, um, and uh, has been significant for us to control uh, that volatile area. As we've discussed many times, what drives your healthcare costs are large claims. So our day-to-day healthcare usage is very stable. And it slightly increases, but not much. The volatility is do you have six large claims and how big are they? Or do you have twenty-six large claims and how big are they? So just to give you an idea, roughly two percent of the uh, employees covered under the plan constitute over forty percent of the total cost of the plan. And that's what large claims do to the plan. Okay? So uh, what's here is just to renew our stop-loss agreement. Again, um, I have uh, the original, as there's some privileged communication on there, but it's a, it's what you have. Um, and again, authorization, authorize uh, chairman to sign, and there's initials that need to be on each page. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time.
Questions, Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the HCC Life Insurance Company two thousand twenty-four stop-loss renewal application and allow the chairman to sign an initial on necessary documents. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Next, under tab B is item number fourteen, which is the request for the approval of the UMR two thousand twenty-four plan letter. Hand it back to Gary.
The third and final item, uh, Mister Chairman, thank you, and County Commissioners, is a um, is the essentially the agreement. Um, and just to refresh everybody's memory on the way uh, self-funded insurance plans work. Um, this is our plan. We're not buying the plan from Blue Cross or UMR. This is a self-funded plan. This is the county's plan. We contract with a third-party uh, provider uh, called the TPA, third-party administrator, which is UMR. And the claims come through them and they take our plan terms and conditions and pay those claims in accordance with those terms and conditions. And then we pay them for a, a fee for that service. Many years ago, um, as the industry got more and more volatile, um, companies, especially for large groups, were refusing to sell full indemnity plans. Those are the plans where you just po- buy a plan that's Blue Cross or UMR and you pay them a premium and that's the coverage you get. Um, and so most of those companies were getting out of that business, uh, because the risks were too volatile. And um, and they forced many large group plans to um, go to self-funded plans at that time. And, and that's, that was the case here. So when you have a self-funded plan, you have to have a contract that they implement that tells how they're going to process claims. And before you is a summary of those modifications. Um, and most of these are clarif- almost all of them are clarification modifications, trying to make it more understandable uh, from UMR standpoint to implement or from the employee's standpoint. This is kind of a continual uh, process. From a substantive standpoint, there's been no substantive changes to the plan uh, designed, but we're always trying to find ways to uh, communicate it or make it clear so that it can be processed uh, uh, more significantly. Probably in general, um, I would say that um, relative to this issue, one of the significant changes that happened this year, you've probably heard of the No Surprises Act. But what would happen is, is individuals would, would go, uh, let's say to Saint Marks or, or uh, hospital and they would have surgery and the doctor's in network. But the doctor contracts with anesthesiologist who's out of network. They don't tell you this, of course. And then you get a bill and you find out that the anesthesiologist charged you ten grand because they're out of network. And so the No Surprises Act, that's one of the amendments i- in here, doesn't allow to do that and you don't have to pay. If they don't make the disclosure, then you don't have to pay. Which is a big deal for us and for people that do, um, as you know, if you do outpatient surgery uh, today, doctors will say, do you want to have it at M K D? Do you want to have it at the hospital? Do you want to have it at the clinic? The out, you know, you get to choose. But you don't often know, is that in-network, out-of-network? And just because the doctor is, doesn't mean that the other providers are. And obviously employees and, and patients had no way of really knowing that either. And so that, that act has been helpful to try to correct uh, what was kind of a corrupt practice um, of people following their doctor and then having a bunch of out-of-network charges. So that's probably the most significant thing um, um, in here. Again, I'm um, requesting the board to uh, approve that and authorize the chairman to sign as indicated.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions on the acceptance letter, Commissioners?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Slaughter.
Gary, I want to go back to the concept of the in-work network providers, because I've just, it's, it's funny, just in the last week, I've had multiple questions with respect to that. And it seems as if those in-network providers are shrinking. And, and we're seeing fewer and fewer of those. Are, are you seeing that? And if that's the case, how, uh, it, it's, it's from what I've heard from people, and this actually took place with my wife on, on an issue also, you know, it, it's there, she was, in, in her specific case, she was going to do rehabilitation on her wrist.
Yeah.
One of our physical therapists was going to be in-network for just like three weeks.
Right.
And then they were dropping out of network.
Right.
Is, is that something that you're seeing? Is it something that we, we should be aware of and be concerned with or?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Um, periodically, so what happens? Uh, let's take a step back a little bit. When you contract with UMR or Blue Cross or Cigna or any other uh, thing, what you're really contracting with is the network they build. So they go out to providers and they say, hey, um, we will send you all of our plan book of business to you or make you available if you provide, you know, X amount of discount or at, at a discounted rate. In Wyoming, as you know, we don't have an abundance of healthcare. So those discounts typically are not as great. So just a rough comparison, um, you might have, say, Blue Cross or UMR, you might have a ten, fifteen percent discount off billed charges in Wyoming. If you went to Salt Lake, those would be thirty, thirty-five percent off billed charges because you have lots of choices of providers. Um, in Wyoming, right now, there's a s- significant uh, shortage of dentists. So why would a dentist incentivize, be incentivized to join a uh, in-network because they have already have more patients than they need? So they're not going to provide much of a discount. If you went for, had those same services somewhere else, it might be twenty, thirty, forty percent off a billed charges. So what happens is there's a process there where sometimes we suggest somebody to be brought into the network. And then in this case, UMR has staff to go out and, and build that network. Certain areas, physical therapy is a good example, where they have um, tons of business and there's not much incentive for them to go uh, to be in the network. In the particular example you're talking about, the billed charges were so high, well, they were the highest actually of any that we had experience with. And they couldn't come to terms on remaining in the network. So the provider said, we're not going to accept that payment. Meaning the, the, the physical therapy provider said, we're not accepting the payment. And they negotiated this for about three months. Um, so as in terms of that being a wholesale problem, the answer is absolutely not. It does happen from time to time. And sometimes if they're close, but there's some things we can uh, make arrangements for that. I use the same physical therapy provider, so I'm very familiar with the issue, but um, um, sometimes they're so far apart, it doesn't make any sense. And that, to me, is the case here. Um, maybe there'll be some resolution at some point in the, in the future. Um, but that, that does happen. Um, the, the other thing that's important to understand with that is the, there are specialties, and I'm going to use an example like eye surgery. Obviously, we don't have thirty eye surgeons here. And so why would an eye surgeon be in a network? They have no reason to be. There's one. Um, so um, the plan design right now treats as though they're in-network, even though they're not. Costs the plan more, but that's the problem of living where we live. Um, so there are some of those things. If there aren't resources within a reasonable distance and we treat them in, in, in network regardless. Um, the other place where this comes up, and you all probably have family or friends that have had this, who saw this, probably And you all probably have family or friends that have had this and you saw this probably most prominently during covid. If you're transported by air typically to the University of Utah and they're full as they were during covid. You may get transferred to another hospital, Saint Marks, Ogden, or whatever. And those hospitals may or may not be networked. From the patient standpoint, those are all treated as inpatient because you don't have any discretion about where the availabilities hospitals are. Once you're stabilized and been treated, then you know, you have an obligation to seek out a a network provider if you want those lower costs. But in the emergent circumstance, those are all treated as in network. But that's a good question because it's a constantly evolving. It's a constantly evolving issue. And again, the the costs and the cost of the plan and the availability to communicate is directly proportional to the availability of healthcare providers. If you have more, the costs are more favorable. And if you don't, the costs are always going to be higher. And and that's certainly our case.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the U M R two thousand twenty four plan letter. Allow the chairman to sign on necessary documents.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, just one other heads up since we're talking insurance stuff and I saw that, you know, we're going to discuss the budget agenda. I'm going to be sending out a communication for those of you that are liaison to component unit members. Recommending a five percent increase for budget purposes at this point. Obviously, we don't have a lot of data. But in terms of planning for the budget. The if you were to look at the medical trans, you'd say that should be ten. We had a good year last year. There's no reason to do that. But having zero or or no increase has never served us well. It just means that next year, the year after, we have to have a big increase. And so for right now, we're putting in a five percent increase in the health insurance side and we should have the county's cost, you know, to you and to the county clerk's office for personnel costs, which are, you know, around twenty nine million for the county in the next week or two. So what I would suggest or request of the board, if if there's any discussion that needs to be or wants to be had in terms of any costs that affect employment, please let us know as early as we can. We can run those cost estimates. The base model will be done next week. And so we should be able to get you hard and fast figures and I can certainly happy to give you an estimate next week that should be pretty close in terms of employment costs, including the five percent. There are no other significant factors. There are no significant increases while my retirement or unemployment, work, comp, or or any of those other things. So it just will be the insurance amount. So I'd be happy to provide that whenever you're ready. As part of the budget process.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, hopefully we'll get right into that in our next discussions and try and kind of attack the budget a little more proactive, I guess, this year. A little difficult last year with all the different changes, but thanks for that.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we are still trailing behind here, but a lot of important information today, so. Next up under tab B is item number fifteen. We've got the fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget schedule discussion. With us this morning is Clerk Lane, as well as Rebecca Romero from the accounting and clerk's office and good afternoon to you both now.
I know I look to make sure. Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners. We have put into the agenda, the twenty twenty four budget schedule for the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. It's yearly, we give you a schedule of what we think might work for the budget season. And it's we're just here to see if we need to make any changes, clarify anything before we set this into motion.
Thanks, Cindy. Any comments commissioners? I've got quite a few, but I'll open that up.
Mr. Chairman, I have one and it it comes from our public works director. Apparently, he had some question as to whether Rebecca, how she perceives the requests will be coming into the clerk's office. And specifically, for some reason, he felt like there was a perception that Rebecca thought that maybe only those reports for the clerk's office would be done through the clerk. Not taking into consideration all the component units and the other budgets that we be coming in. Is there confusion there? Or I I just got an email on that this morning or text this morning on that.
No, we planned on doing it the same we did last year. We took the one from the former account manager and we just changed the dates to make it work for of course, the changes of the the days of the weeks for this year and we just left it the same. But no, we will be sending out the forms to the component units to be returned by the date that is requested on this.
That was how I read that, but I, as I say, I just have the question and I thought I would bring it up to satisfy that that request.
Yes, no, we plan on running it the same way unless you guys have something that the commission has anything you would like to change, we'll be happy to incorporate that. We are finishing up. The audit should be completed by at least the end of this month. And so I'm switching gears now. You know, that was a new learning opportunity the last six months. And now we're going to learn the the budgeting process and we plan on keeping it as close to the same as possible. So we have something to work off of. So this was actually the same budget schedule from last year. And like I said, of course, you know, the days fall on different days or the dates fall on different days of the week. So we just tweak those to make sure they still followed the correct calendar dates. And then we wanted to present it to you. It's a little earlier. Normally it's done at the end of February. But because we are going to be learning, we thought we better get a head start and you guys can look at the dates and make sure they work for your schedules.
Any other questions, comments?
It jams a lot at the end, but I guess if you guys think you can do it, I'd like to see some of it moved up, but I think it's kind of hard, I guess, with the deadlines you have.
Yes, but I think it worked last year, but that's what I'm saying. If you would like to switch that up, change it, you just let us know and we'll be happy to to change those in any way you would like that to be done. We just have this to go off of and that's what we started with.
So I've been kind of thinking about that in in relation to last year and just some of the different there was a lot of unknowns with Senate File sixty and the tax collection and how that rolls in and what are the projections looking like and you know, it felt like there was a lot of it's no one's fault. It's just the way the process worked of we didn't have revenue projections. And so we're sitting up here, you know, meeting with all these different outside agencies and component units and what have you that didn't really do a whole lot other than hear amount because we didn't know where we were going to end up. And it just felt like it was important. It was informative and educational in that process, but everything was hinging on where we're going to be. And I I think the the bulk of the budget, you know, is is pretty well spoken for in regards to you know, operations and salaries. So, you know, I'm curious some of the feedback from from you all, but it it just seems to me that it's just a long and drawn out process and I I don't know that it really needs to be. If if we can kind of communicate some of our priorities upfront, then perhaps that gives you guys more direction to start preparing. And what I mean by that is you know, whether that's a cost of living and getting options on what a whatever the number is, two, three, four percent looks like or you know, that all doesn't have to be done on July first either. It could be done. You know, one and a half percent in July and one and a half percent in December, whatever it looks like, but getting those numbers ahead of the time and and planning for that. And even on, you know, revenue projections, even if we just look at it as basis as a baseline off of last year. And, you know, adjustments can be made after we do have those numbers, but I think it allows us to kind of have a more, you know, engaged process of knowing this is where we want to be and our priorities are, you know, whatever, capital improvements or things along that nature. I I I just felt like the amount of, you know, especially outside agencies and you know, different departments that came, I mean, obviously Core County will want to hear from them. And I think it would make sense to hear from component units as well, but some of those are just kind of same old requests, even if they don't have an increase, you know, do we really want to go through two full days of of budget workshops if there's not a lot of change? You know, and I think if we can kind of set the table, so to speak, upfront as to what we're after this year, that may help on their end as well in understanding how to prepare their budgets. So I'm curious if you all have any other feedback. I just felt like it was kind of an unknown territory last year. And this year we've we've got a little bit different opportunity to I guess, answer any of those unknown questions.
I I think the chair is is echoing sentiments that I brought up last year. You know, I I felt like, you know, the budget process could be much simpler than what it was. And I I think you've hit the nail on the head with some of the issues that I brought up last year and and how we could potentially do that. And I and I think it we should be able to do that. So I I I totally agree.
Any other feedback, Commissioner Richards?
Mr. Chairman. Would it be worth it to to try to schedule a workshop earlier in the process? So we can have some discussions and and maybe build some consensus of what our goals in the budget are and then give those those outside component agencies some some guidance in what we in what we expect to see from their budget proposals.
Yeah, I I think so. I mean, they're they're planning on emailing component units and outside agencies. You know, essentially right after our our next meeting in February here. And so I think whether we have our own workshop or if we can incorporate that into our next meeting, you know, if we can get some of these numbers in advance. But then we can kind of, you know, take a direction on that. Doesn't mean that even if it's a cost of living, it has to be set in stone. But I I think it's much easier to say, you know, we're comfortable with X. Moving forward, because last year it felt like everyone was submitting budgets unknowingly, you know, in regards to a cost of living, for instance. And I just think, you know, the bulk of our operation is basically, you know, any changes in capital or you know, certain priorities that we want to see. I mean, those are kind of standard as far as operation and salary go. But yeah, I'm open to that, whether it's a workshop or a discussion during our next meeting, depending on what that agenda looks like to try and give more direction, I think is the goal.
Mr. Chairman, do you think the next meeting is too early or do you think it's worth just diving straight in? And in February, I I think we would need some information and Gary already left with some information on on some labors to tell.
Still there. You're hiding back there. You're blending in with the chair.
Some information on labors on 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 inflation rates and and what we're seeing so we can make an educated guess at the next meeting of 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 what direction we're going to go on COLA's. It's great to hear a recommendation from him on the healthcare increase. I'm sure component units will I'll need that information. But last year they came here with pie in the sky cola additions into their into their budgets with no no real basis for them. And and I and I'd like to see us give them guides ahead of time.
Yeah, no, completely agree with that approach. And that's kind of the goal. The only reason I said next meeting is just because they will be sending out this this email, you know, the twenty second. That's not to say we can't change that, but you know, I I believe we can get some of those numbers pretty quickly. So I think it's achievable. I don't want to speak for the different departments, but I think, you know, primarily they're going to be the same, right?
Chairman West, I we did speak with Assessor Devis and to talk about starting on the budget because that's where we get our our projections for most of the money coming into the county. And he thinks it'll be a better idea. We'll have a better idea this year than we did last year with the new change. So we should be able to give. You never know what the numbers are going to be, but a better idea of what those will be, you know, based off of last year. So yeah, that's why we're here. Anything you want to change or do different, let us know. We do want to get these out earlier. And then if you want to add workshops, we do that. And we can move them around. That's why this is just a guideline and we'll be happy to do whatever works best.
Mr. Chairman, I think last year, one of the big concerns we had was we didn't have really any idea what we were going to do with revenue. And as you stated, Senate File sixty was a big component of that. But I I I think that we should be able to set a revenue number fairly simply as an estimate by by taking what our revenues have been. We heard Treasurer Cowan today talk about the Craig Report and said that mineral tax revenues are going to be down ten percent is what they're estimating. I think if we use that as a guide and set that up as our initial revenue number, it's pretty simple to set that. Now, we can always change that as we get more information. And obviously, the assessor's office gets a lot better information as we get closer to the the time that we formalize the budget. But, you know, I I think that's a pretty simple number to come up with at this point in time with the information we've got and to start with it. So.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just feel like we don't really need to reinvent the wheel. I think a lot of the information's there and it can be pretty comparable. And adjustments can be made later on once we get through some of the process. So I guess from your perspective is would it be more beneficial if we had a workshop? Or do you think it's something we can incorporate into the next meeting, still allowing you to kind of meet the proposed timeline that you've got?
I think we could put it in the next meeting if there's time to just have a discussion. If you'd like something where you can take as much time as you want, we can set up a workshop that afternoon or whenever you would like that to give us a guideline. We just would like to get this sent out so that the component units and the outside agencies have time to get their stuff together. And we were kind of wondering, you know, were you happy with the form? You know, that stuff that we could change if you had questions from last year that you would like to be different or any additions or subtractions from that form.
Any feedback on on that aspect commissioners? I think it worked well. I I think it incorporated a lot of the necessary information. I, you know, personally, it kind of a unique circumstance when you're dealing with taxpayer, you know, dollars, you want to be in the know on, you know, what their intentions are. But when you sit through two days of basically, you know, there isn't a significant change, I don't know that we really need to hear from all of those those agencies. You know, I think the the bigger heavy hitter ones that makes sense, particularly, you know, component units, but I don't know how you all felt. I mean, I I learned a lot from that process, but a lot of the forms that they're filling out is very forthcoming with what their intentions are. And so, you know, if there's not a significant increase, I don't really see the need. I mean, we can always call them to the table, so to speak, if if we do have issue, but.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think maybe one change I'd like to see is we ask them what their days cash on hand was as of a certain date. But we had we had some issues with that because every everybody had different needs going all the way to the end of their fiscal years. So maybe we should add a line asking what their estimated cash on hand is as of the end of the fiscal year. So we we can kind of see what their what their projections are for their whole fiscal year, not just an arbitrary date, the beginning of this year.
No, that's a great point because it's usually, you know, March timeframe by the time they're submitting those. So that's a good point.
Hey, we'll get that added.
Any other feedback?
I think it's a good idea to get our priorities out there because it was confusing. I mean, some of them were doing ten percent increases and five and if we give them a direction and we shoot for it, it saves a lot of adjustments later.
Mr. Chairman. If we set our set our priorities and and these entities come in with budgets that are within the the windows that we set for them, we probably don't need to have them standing in front of us justifying them. But but if they go outside those windows, then I'd like to hear from them and why they think we should fund them at higher rates. Because I I I firmly believe we need to keep a hard line on spending and we need to fund some of these agencies, but they need to know that we're not a cash cow.
Yeah, and I it just felt like everything was so delayed last year that it it made it hard to even give them direction while they were here, you know, because we were still waiting on numbers to roll in. So I just think we've got enough information. We can be pretty accurate with that. And as stated, if you know, if we get it wrong, we can always add to it at the end or later on, you know, we've got budget amendments or whatever the process is. I just think we can simplify this a lot easier rather than trying to overcomplicate it. Most of the items are are pretty fixed, so.
Mr. Chairman, I I do have one other concern. And it it comes from seeing how previous boards of commissioners handled cash carryover and what took place. Because I anticipate this year, we're going to see a significant cash carryover, specifically in the capital area where we didn't expend the money that was anticipated in the budget for the Knight Building. We're going to see a significant carryover come back from that project. We cannot set those funds aside, so they will come back to our cash carryover, go into reserves. And in in the past, I've seen boards of county commissioners who have taken a hard line stance, that they're going to balance the budget based off what that year's current revenues are. And when you have those types of carryovers, which are coming from prior years when the money was not expended, I don't think you can I don't think you can look at it that way, so I, I think it's beneficial for us to have, whether it be a workshop or conversations on how we would approach those types of issues, um, prior to getting to that point also, because it, it is going to be something that we are going to have come into us this year, and, um, something that we are going to have to address.
Okay, so is it the pleasure of the board to have a workshop prior to our next meeting, or would you like to have it after our next meeting, and you know, change the timeline that, uh, has been prepared here as far as the budget schedule goes? Kind of got a mixed bag going, it feels like.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think this calendar is, is, is good, we i- if we, if we solve some of those issues and, and set some of the parameters ahead of time, maybe we, we won't have such long workshops on, on meeting days, but I, but I think the, the calendar schedule of those workshops still works for us, allow us to, to get information, ask questions. Um, but I, I think we should add, add a workshop after our next meeting, doesn't have to be super long, but we should be able to uh, spend as much time as we need to talking to each other and, and, and coming up with, with a consensus plan, so I, I'd recommend that we have a, a workshop after our commission meeting in two weeks.
Okay, and are you suggesting before emailing out the request to the component units and outside agencies? I mean, that's only a couple days, right, our meeting's on the twentieth, the schedule.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we, we should talk amongst ourselves and kind of have an idea of what what we want, e- even if they just listen in and get an idea of what we're talking about and what our consensus is. Because we won't be get, make, be making any hard decisions in that discussion, but, but we can, we can get the, the folks we fund on the same page.
Okay, I think I understand.
We could do that, like in the afternoon after our meeting, have a half hour, hour discussion, work session, or whatever.
Or four hours, or.
Yeah, you know.
Hopefully not.
During lunch hour, you know.
And Chairman, that is the, the beauty of this schedule, is it can be changed, it's just a guideline, so that we kind of have an idea where we're setting those deadlines, so we'll put down that we'll have a workshop, you'll have a workshop on the twentieth after the meeting, and then if we decide the twenty-second isn't the day to send them out, we can also wait on that.
I'm good with that, is everyone good with that?
I'm too, we're here all, all day anyway, either you or Commissioner Tomlin, I'll go get windy during the meeting anyway, I see the days are very welcome, so.
From my standpoint, um, if there's any information that you need, um, the, uh, Commissioner Richards alluded to uh, some of the information that we annually provide regarding cost of living and other things that might be relevant. We track that throughout the year, so if the deed is out there, we can present it and continue to update it towards the end of the year. Um, but I don't want to oversimplify the process, but right now we have twenty-nine million in employment costs, you've got eight, nine million in operating costs, and six million in capital for the county, that's our forty-four million. And so it, today, you're going to vary that a little bit up and down, maybe, but that's more or less where we're at, as Commissioner Slaughter alluded to, the, the, if we can kind of figure out what the incentives are from, from the revenue side, figure out where we're at, then I think we're pretty close to, to knowing those costs. The operating costs, we've really kept down, you won't see a lot of increases, I don't believe in the operating costs, and capital costs, obviously, are going to go up and down depending on what level that you, you know, funded. Um, and so, um, most of the information I can provide to you by the end of the week, but certainly by next week, so you guys can talk amongst yourselves, if there's anybody that wants anything more specific, I'd be happy to do that. But most of it's running, just running something out of our system, uh, to produce that, as far as the economy reports, obviously, there's a little bit of a lag as terms of the quarter, but we track them throughout the year, it's not like we have to go prepare anything, they're ready right now. Um, relative to the cost of living discussion, if you plan on a hundred eighty-seven thousand per percent, that'll be really close, we'll update that as we move forth uh, with the budget models. But it, again, we're only going to be off of a thousand dollars or something, so it's not going to be that much. Um, so in terms of having something you can work with right now, I'll send that out to you also, it'll be very close to what the final number would be. Um, again, um, uh, we can make as many, as many, you know, models or, or what have you as, as we want. The only other suggestion is, and I think this fits into what you're discussing, if you can come up with the revenue figure, one of the things that we have not done collectively a great job of is determining what the priorities are. And that's kind of what the Capital Committee did on the capital side, is trying to determine one, two, three, four, if there's more revenue and you guys choose to fund more, then we go down to five, six, seven. If not, maybe we only do one, two, three, that might be a process that you can use relative to some of the other budgets that are submitted, um, in terms of what the priorities are and get those prioritized, if the revenues come in lower, then maybe we don't go down as far on that priority list, and that would allow the board to move ahead fairly quickly. And I know most of you have talked to, uh, the component units and, and other county agencies that have significant projects, if we could figure out where those fall in relative priority, then it might help the board approach in a more tactical way, um, the budget to make sure that those priority items, um, however you choose to define those, are funded first in the lower priorities, and if the revenue's in the higher, then you can just push down lower into that, that, that priority list, so just, just something that might provide some useful structure.
Appreciate that, Gary.
And Chairman, that is, I mean, I'm falling off of what Gary just said, his staff is already sending out the, do we have any projections for our department in, or our office in, um, increases like in staffing, who's going to be getting step raises and stuff, they have to put that in, but also like it's an election year, so I have to bump mine up significantly, just paying all the election judges and all the overtime and stuff that happens, so, um, they are already on it, and so they're really good at that.
Okay. So I think in preparation for the workshop, then, if we can have some numbers on, you know, what some different percentages of, on the cost of living would look like, I mean, we, it sounds like we can get pretty close with a hundred and eighty-seven. Got revenue projection based off what the Craig Report's telling us, um, and then I guess for our part, just to kind of identify any priorities that we want to see as a board moving forward, and what that may look like with capital and carryover and et cetera, is everyone good with that, let's see if we can provide some more direction this year? Okay. I think that works for us, if it works for you.
Good, works for us, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The last item on the agenda under tab B today, Commissioners, is item number sixteen, which is the Solid Waste Disposal District Number One Board Appointment, we have had a vacancy come about due to a resignation, it sounds like we have a couple more on the horizon to fill, um, we, we have had two board applications to fill the role. And so I would ask if anyone has any pleasure or feedback?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
Um, both of these applications are great, um, it's good to have multiple openings coming up when you have multiple good applications, uh, but in the, in the short term, Devin Brubaker has been very involved with the Solid Waste District, and I think he can hit the ground running with a, with a good background of the issues they're dealing with right now, so I would, I would move that we appoint Devin Brubaker to fill the unexpired term in front of us.
Thanks, Commissioner, we do have a motion to appoint Devin Brubaker to fill the unexpired term of Lars Nandrup, this term goes through March first of twenty-twenty-six. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Um, yeah, as mentioned, we had two applications, Devin and, and Colby Moss, both who were very involved with the operation of in this particular, um, service, so it'll hopefully we get a couple more on file for these next anticipated um, seats that are becoming available, but appreciate both of them for applying, and also appreciate Lars' service on that board, and with that, we do have a motion and a second on the table, if there's no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Congratulations to Devin, sounds like he needed another project anyway. Next on the agenda is an executive session, we do have a pre-decisional item that needs to be discussed in executive today. Um, it is unclear if action will be taken, but we'll know more upon coming out, and with that, an entertaining motion to enter into executive session to discuss pre-decisional.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous, and we are now in executive.